I'd like to call this meeting to order. First, I would like to announce that this meeting is being recorded and ask if there's anyone in the audience who is also recording this meeting. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session.
I'd like to move to go into executive session under Chapter 30A, Subsection 21A2, to conduct a strategy session in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, the town manager, and to conduct negotiations with non-union personnel, the town manager, and reconvene in open session.
Second.
Is there discussion? This is a roll call vote. Mr. Holstrom?
Yes.
Mr. Simonián?
Yes.
Mr. Grossman?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes. I'd like to call this meeting back to order. I'll announce again that this meeting is being recorded and ask if there's anyone in the audience who is also recording this meeting. Hearing none, if we could rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
The Pledge of Allegiance will declare the United States of America, the free public where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item we have is the Town Manager's reappointment. Is there a motion to reappoint the Town Manager for a three-year term? Thank you.
Madam Chair, I move whereas the town desires to continue to employ the services of Julia Jacobson, Ms. Jacobson, as Town Manager of the Town of Auburn, and whereas under the Town Charter, the Board of Selectmen is authorized to appoint a Town Manager for a term of three years, and whereas Ms. Jacobson agrees to accept reappointment as Town Manager of said town for a term of three years, now therefore be it voted by the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Auburn as follows: That the Board of Selectmen reappoints Ms. Jacobson as the Town Manager of the Town for a term of three years effective January 31, 2014 through January 30, 2017.
Is there a second?
Second.
We're under discussion. Mr. Simonián?
Yeah, um, so I want to, I want to explain my vote beforehand because I want to be clear that this, um, this has absolutely nothing to do with the Town Manager. My feeling is that she's done the job that she's been asked to do. The reason that I'm not supporting it is because of the entire process, in my opinion, has been flawed, manipulated, and to a degree ignored. It's obvious that the process of Town Manager selection and reappointment needs to be looked at, reworked, and some changes need to be made. As you'll, as you'll note, and I guess I really can't get into it because we don't have the contract as of yet, but I'll have to wait until after some of the things that are part of the contract are, are delved into before I speak to them. But, um, from the first, from the first time that we met, I asked, I asked the Board to consider what they were doing. I felt that we needed some legal guidance. We have a policy as far as contacting Town Legal that was implemented last year. I was the sole person who spoke out against the policy. I felt that it was unnecessary and that there would come a time where that policy would hamstring us, and that came to pass during this process. We had, from the time we had that first executive session where I raised the question, the Chair had three weeks before our next executive session, three weeks to a month, somewhere in that timeframe, I'm not going to speak in exact, and could have easily convened this Board and asked the Board's permission per the policy to have Town Council present to authorize that expense, which is the whole, was the whole crux of the argument for even implementing that policy in the first place, was to not incur unnecessary costs for all of you. Even with that three weeks of time that this Board could have been convened to have that vote, the Chair, by her own admission, took it upon herself to consult with Town Council and invite Town Council to a follow-up executive session. At that point, in open session, I questioned why he was there, and I, and that, and I was told that, at her discretion, he was brought there. I said it was a violation of the policy, and as far as I was concerned, it violated the exact reason that that policy was implemented. In my opinion, I was not going to participate in an executive session that I felt was defrauding the taxpayers of this town when no vote of this Board had been taken to authorize Town Council to be there. So, again, it's, it has nothing to do with the Town Manager, it has everything to do with the process, the way it was handled, the way it played out. So, that, that said, it's the only reason why I'm not supporting this.
Is there anything else before I call the roll? Mr. Holstrom?
Yes.
Mr. Simonián?
I'm, I'm, no.
Mr. Simonián?
I'm, I'm.
Calling the vote.
Oh, no.
Mr. Grossman?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes. I'll now entertain a motion regarding the employment contract.
Make a motion whereas the Board of Selectmen is authorized an employment agreement between the Town and Julia Jacobson, Ms. Jacobson, for the period of January 31, 2014 through January 30, 2017, and whereas the Board of Selectmen has approved the employment agreement attached to this vote between the Town and Ms. Jacobson, now therefore be it voted by the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Auburn as follows: That the Board of Selectmen ratifies the employment agreement attached to this vote between the Town and Ms. Jacobson.
Is there a second?
Second.
We're under discussion. Mr. Simonián?
According to what Mr. Holstrom just read, that's a three-year.
It should be a five-year.
I'm sorry if, if.
2014, 17.
2019.
19. Thank you, Mr. Simonián. Mr. Holstrom, can you amend your motion?
19, make the amendment.
So we have an employment agreement for 2000, January 31, 2014 through January 30, 2019. Is there any further discussion? Mr. Simonián?
Now that it's been, now that it's been put out there for public consumption, I'll, I'll speak to it. This is exactly the initial point that I raised, which, which makes absolutely no sense to me, um, I think is completely unprofessional of this Board, to, the Charter is clear that the Town Manager cannot be appointed for more than three years. Makes absolutely no sense to me why we would offer a five-year contract, because what that does is, three years from now, five years from now, some of us, all of us, could be not sitting here. So, to me, that hamstrings any Board of the Future and puts them, them in a position where if they decide they want to go in a different path as we did three years ago, they would be forced to buy out two years of a contract that the Charter does not even allow us to appoint for. Doesn't make any sense to me. This was the initial point that I raised. This is why the Chair consulted with Town Council without coming to the Board. This is another reason why I completely disagree with this. This makes absolutely no sense. I, I cannot see any reason why you would appoint someone for five years when the Charter is, or, or offer a five-year contract when the Charter is clear that they cannot be appointed for more than three years. I think it's arrogant of this Board to do this and to tell a Board of the Future that you will have the Town Manager we decided three years ago, five years ago, was the right person. That takes decisions out of their hands or puts them in a position where they have to authorize a buyout of a contract to move in a different direction. Again, has nothing, this, this argument has nothing to do with the Town Manager. I, I said it before, I'll say it again. I, I feel that she's done the job that she's been asked to do. This speaks to the policy, and it speaks to what I feel is a flaw in the entire process. The appointment and the contract length should absolutely agree. We aren't the Red Sox, we aren't the Yankees, we aren't in the business of offering 10-year contracts, five-year contracts, and saying, "Well, if it doesn't work out, we'll just spend taxpayer money and buy it out." That's ridiculous. That's a waste, it's irresponsible, and it's arrogant. Said my piece.
Anything else regarding the motion? Mr. Holstrom, I'm calling the roll?
Yes.
Mr. Simonián?
No.
Yes.
Mr. Grossman and the Chair votes yes. So I think we'll finish with the formalities of the signatures before I, I have a couple letters to read in here. I'd like to make comments, others may want to make comments, but I now would like to have Labor Council execute the employment agreement for legal form. And then the CFO will also sign the contract to funds availability. Should have checked your pad first. The Chair will execute, and then the Manager will. And then we need the Town Clerk as well?
Town Clerk, yes. She, she does it after the end of every.
Should be another page right here. Yep, it's us.
Do you read this, huh?
Yes. Yes.
Today's date. If the Clerk, if the Chairman were into the date.
Today's date.
Both agreements would be yes.
So that's, the signatures are done. Well, first of all, congratulations on your reappointment and. I, I just want to say a couple things, and I will address Mr. Simonián's comments regarding the Labor Council under agenda item, member items to update on policy, Board of Selectmen policies, but I certainly don't want to take away from this, you know, this time right here, this positive action that we just took for the Town. I did serve on the Subcommittee to Negotiate with the Manager. We went in there with a goal of reappointing the Town Manager. The Board wanted to keep the Manager. We heard from everyone, from Town employees, department heads, residents, businesses, what a good job she's doing. We see it every day, and I was so glad to hear from other people who felt the same way. I do have a couple letters that I wanted to read into the record. This is dated today. Dear Madam Chair, this is from Selectwoman Brotherton, who unfortunately just had to leave right after executive session, she's not well at all. Dear Madam Chair, regardably, I am unable to attend tonight's open session due to illness. However, I wanted to provide you with this letter to read to the other members of the Board as well as to the public regarding my support for the reappointment of the Town Manager and the Town Manager's five-year contract. If I were present this evening, I would have voted in favor of the five-year contract as prepared. I also would have voted in favor of the reappointment of the Town Manager for a period of three years in accordance with the Town Charter. I wholeheartedly support the Town Manager and look forward to continuing to work with her. Sincerely, Denise A. Brotherton. I have another letter that I was asked to read. I cannot be here tonight because of extenuating circumstances. I wanted to be here in support of Julie's contract. I have been with the Town 30 years plus, and in the 30 years, I have worked for a number of executive secretaries. Julie has been here three years, and I have never seen the Town undergo so many wonderful changes. Julie has been relentless in making things in Auburn better for all of the Town residents. I have many friends, relatives, and complete strangers come in and say how wonderful the changes have been. Julie is the hardest worker I know, her compassion for the Town shows in everything she does. She is compassionate with the employees but expects the best that they can give. I support Julie in every way, she is the best asset to the Town, along with Ed Kasnovich. This team will bring the Town of Auburn to be, be the best it has ever been. Go Julie and Ed. And that's signed, Paxi Biergad. And I have one last letter that was, I received by email today. Dear Madam Goodrich, Madam Goodrich, as a longtime business owner of Atlas Distributing Incorporated, I am writing to express my appreciation and gratitude for our Town Manager, Ms. Julie Jacobson. Over the past three years, I have been extremely pleased to work, service, extremely pleased with the work, service, professionalism, and extraordinary results provided by Ms. Jacobson. Ms. Jacobson has made a tremendous impact in her short time as Town Manager in Auburn. The roads are clear, service is excellent, operating costs reductions have been significant, resulting in savings of millions of dollars, all benefiting the Auburn tax pay about, by, while providing best-in-class services. In addition, the executive reorganization plan for the Town enhanced and improved our community. However, what impressed me most is Ms. Jacobson's responsiveness. Outreach to the business community, willingness to work hard, and the personality and profession, professionalism make a difference for this community. In my opinion, and that of our senior leadership team at Atlas, Ms. Jacobson is a difference-maker, and we are fortunate to have her leadership in the Town of Auburn. Wishing you and the Auburn community a Happy New Year. Respectfully, Joe Salloyes, owner and President, Atlas Distributing. So I'll now open it up to Board comments, if anyone wants to say anything. Mr. Holstrom?
Through the Chair. Congratulations, Julie. It's been almost four years now that we've had a new Charter in place, and our Town Manager has taken the bull by the horns and gone forward with it. We've done nothing but improve. We've saved thousands upon thousands of dollars in legal fees, insurance costs. The Finance Department has put together policies to help us along with the tools they need to help us implement those financial programs to make us look as good as we are. And with her whole team, and all of you, and all the other Town Employees in the Town have made this Town one of the best and the envy of most of Worcester County, and I thank you all, and again, congratulations, Julie. Thank you.
Mr. Grossman?
Yes. Julie, I want to congratulate you on your appointment. I'd like to go back, I've been in this office for 18 years, and what's been accomplished in the last three has not accomplished anywhere near that in 18 years. So, we have someone that's, that's on top of the ball, that's organized, that knows what's going on, and accomplished what needs to be done. And again, congratulations.
Thank you very much. Is there any other board comment? Mr. Simonián?
Just like, for my congratulations as well, look forward to continuing to work with you.
Thank you. And I think our CFO and Assistant Town Manager would like to say something.
Thank you very much, Julie. Congratulations. We're all glad you're on board for five years. I know I speak, you have a lot of smiling faces out here, and the show of support is really a tribute to the hard work and efforts that you have given the Town the past three years, and I know it will continue. You make it enjoyable for everyone to come to work, you assembled a great management team, one of the best I've seen. I'm proud of the accomplishments, the hard work, and the progress we have made, not only in the financial area, but, I mean, you just hear the comments day in and day out from the Town Administration's point of view of the effects of the new Charter and the work that you have, have, have put into effect. Positive comments on the roads, the highways, inspectional services, I mean, everyone is pulling together, and you should be proud of that, and we're proud that you're going to continue to work with us.
Thank you. Is there anyone who wanted to make any public comment? In the corner?
He signed up for a public comment.
I guess I was under this agenda item. Go ahead.
Jimmy O'Connor, Precinct 2. First of all, I want to thank the Board of Selectmen for what they did this evening. I was hoping for a seven to 10-year, but I'll settle for what we got. I'm serious. But first of all, Ms. Jacobson, you have done so much for this Town, as the letters and the Selectmen have said. What we've seen in a short period of time, this Town is nothing but the best to the best. The team that you have put together, the Public Safety Chiefs, Lieutenant Mass, thank you for coming back, your Fire Chief, all your department heads, your workers, you see them out on the road plugging hard, when they take their break, they're standing around a joke or two. You can see the love that they have for this Town. And without you, we wouldn't be where we are here today, and you know I hate changes. But I want to thank you very much, and for Ed Kasnovich, our Finance Boss, you two are not going to be replaced. I talked to a lot of people in the city of Worcester, I still have connections, and when the City Manager left, Ms. Jacobson was high on that radar, and she's still there, but I know she's not going anywhere. I had no conversation with her, I'm up on here on my own. I was just in a dealership two weeks ago out of town to have my truck serviced. I was talking to the, the Sales Manager, he's a Town Selectman and a Town away from Auburn. His wife is in a department head also. Well, we clashed that night, so I read it in the paper and joked, so now I'm waiting to see him. Where did you sleep last night? So we joked about it. And he says to me, "You people in the Town of Auburn are very fortunate to have someone like Mrs. Jacobson." And also, Mr. Kavanosis, the words he said to you is, "This Town is very sound financially, and there's more people in New England that would love to have these two." And this came from two people I spoke to last week. And I hope when the evaluation comes, I hope she's given the highest marks that they are. And we don't go on personalities, not saying there is. But I just want to thank you for what you did for this Town, the Fire Chief, the Police Chief, his crew, and all the Town Workers. I want to thank you very much and give me for the time to speak, and I'm very sincere what I said. We have a great Board, we have a great Town, and we have taken large leaps, not small steps, large leaps. And I'm very proud, when I come out of town from vacation, and when Kenny will tell you where I go, when I come back to enter Auburn, I'm very happy to see the cleanness. So thank you very much for what you did in the department head. So I think if we all give my hand.
Is there anyone else who wanted to speak on this agenda item, the Town Manager's reappointment and contract? Then I guess we'll hear from our newly, oh, Mr. Page, please.
Good evening, Wayne Page, 90 O'Carman Road. I'm in disagreement with the, the contract, but what I'm actually here for right now, I'd like to ask Suda Chairman, is, does our Charter say only a three-year contract? Is that written into our contract?
It is not.
It is not in our contract.
The, the, the contract comes through the Board of Selectmen, the appointment is in the Charter.
Okay. The other thing is, I think the biggest thing I got to say, I think I, I agree with, is the code red that it was started through the Town. I think it's well-deserved and should be appreciated for doing such a good job there. But I think as far as appointment and doing things, I think there's a lot of things being done behind the scenes by not only the Town Manager but the Board of Selectmen. I don't want to come up here to criticize tonight, but I feel as a resident of the Town of Auburn, I need to say what I've seen, what I felt. And not only by the Town Manager, I'm talking about appointment to the zoning Board of Appeals, that was, two members were brutally treated, and then, and then it was not, they weren't reappointed, that's fine, and then one was reappointed to an altered position, which I totally agree with, but then a friend of Mr. Holstrom's family was appointed to a full term.
Mr. Page, Mr. Page, excuse me.
That's why I called him.
We're not on, we're not on zoning Board of Appeals appointments.
I understand that.
The, the agenda item is the Manager's contract and reappointment.
Okay, okay. Well, that's what I'm trying to get, between appointments, between.
If you want to say something under public comment after that.
Trying to say something about the Town Manager, if you'll let me speak. I'm going back to the Town Manager.
Excuse me, I'm the Chairman.
I just don't agree with her worth ethics, I don't agree with her appointments, and I don't agree with Mr. Holstrom being Captain Puppet.
Is there any other public comment? Please give your name and address to the record.
Jill Hamel, 39 Merriam Street. That's one of our problems in Town. We have, we have done more in three years with this Town Manager, as Bob said, than we've done in 18 years.
And that's where I'd like to leave the comments.
It's time to work together and move forward. Julie and Ed, we're gonna, our bond rating should be going up, there is absolutely, I can't see anything to complain about.
Thank you. So, here's your opportunity to respond and make your comments, and again, congratulations.
Thank you very much, thank you all. And first of all, I just want to comment, I am in the short chair tonight, so if I appear to be a little low, I think this might have been intentional. So I'll try to sit up so you can hear me, I know we had to readjust the microphone. So, first of all, thank you very much, and it, it truly has been an honor and a pleasure to serve as Town Manager in this tremendous community, and I am grateful to the Board of Selectmen for the opportunity to continue to serve in this role for the next three years as an appointment and for the next five years, hopefully, under contract. I want to thank the Board of Selectmen for having the confidence in me and in this entire Administration to reappoint me as Town Manager. I want to acknowledge and thank the Subcommittee on Negotiations, who spent many months researching contracts of other Town Managers and developing a fair and equitable contract within the Charter that will result in the stability of this Administration and allow us to continue to undertake the work that we have begun. I want to thank the residents of Auburn and those who are here tonight for welcoming me into this community for the last three years and for supporting our new initiatives during that period of time. I want to thank the volunteers who serve on our Boards, Commissions, and Committees for actively participating in Town Government, your critical input is important to the function of Town Government. And thanks to the business community for working with me and our. And thanks to the business community for working with me and our team to provide input to us, which really has allowed us to enhance the business environment, stimulate economic development, and retain some of our critical industries here. And that's important to do for everybody, including the residents. I want to thank Superintendent Marielle Brunel and her school department for collaborating with us every day with the entire administration, because we all are trying to bring quality services to the town. And we're trying to also continue our excellence in education. I especially want to thank my tremendous management team and each town employee across all departments and those who are here this evening. Thank you, a special thank you. But thanks to everybody for their hard work and dedication to this community. Without this management team and without the commitment of all of these employees, we would not have accomplished so much in so little time. And three years is really a short period of time to make such sweeping changes. We could not be providing the town with the quality of services that we're providing if it wasn't for the department heads, the employees, and everybody who works for this town. This may be about my contract, but it's not about me. It's about us, and it's about us as a town administration and how we all work together to tackle some tough decisions and challenges and come out better for it. Specifically, I want to thank Ed Kasnovich, the Assistant Town Manager, CFO, and Town Accountant with all of his hats, for everything he does and for the supports he provides to me and the entire town administration. Without a doubt, Ed is far and away the best Assistant Town Manager and CFO in this region, if not the entire state. His knowledge, experience, and leadership are invaluable to me and to the whole team, and I think you all testify to that. He's not only a tremendous asset to me in particular and to this whole administration, but he's been a true friend to me. The town of Auburn is in a solid financial position. That is the envy of many, and we're in it today in no small part due to Ed's financial management and fiscal responsibility. So thank you, Ed, for being the best Assistant Town Manager I could ever have. I'm fortunate to have others on the team too, and I do want to take a couple minutes to thank them because it's critical. And I want them to know every day, all the employees, how much I appreciate everybody working with me. Change isn't easy. I know it's been hard to start in an organization with a new former government and have to make changes. So I'm most grateful to the employees for accepting those changes, working with them, and I recognize that it's not always an easy thing to do. I'm fortunate to have Andy Slukas as Chief of Police and Steve Coleman as Fire Chief on my team. As leaders of the police and fire departments, they ensure the highest level of security and continuing public safety for this community day in and day out. Chief Slukas provides strong leadership to the police department as well as valuable input and support to the entire management team. Chief Slukas, his command staff, his entire department, they're professional, they're proactive, and they're extremely competent. They will stand up against any police department across the country. Chief Slukas understands the value of working within the municipal organization to develop new initiatives that affect all of the government, and he's always willing to work with me or anyone else in the administration. I truly value his advice and support. Not only am I fortunate to work with Chief Slukas and his team, but the Auburn community is very lucky to have such a tremendous police department, and I thank them every day for what they do. Chief, Steve Coleman provides professional and strong leadership to the fire department. His knowledge of and commitment to fire safety and rescue and his continuing focus on education and professional development benefit the town of Auburn and make him an asset to our team. The firefighters and fire officers in the department are well-trained, educated, and committed to providing quality services to the residents and the business community. Chief Coleman and his team not only provide quality fire rescue services to Auburn, but they involve themselves in all aspects of the community, from schools to seniors to businesses. Chief Coleman is an asset to me, my team, and to this community. Thank you, Steve. I trust these two chiefs implicitly, and I am confident in their abilities and that of their department to protect and serve this town. Roger Bellhumor does an excellent job as the town's Emergency Management Director. I thank you for taking on this role. There is a lot of work to be done. It's a difficult role, especially in today's environment. He leads the local Emergency Management Planning Committee in planning for emergency operations for the town and behind the scenes does do an awful lot of work to make sure that this town is protected every day under the worst of circumstances and under circumstances that we hope we never face. We can all rest easy knowing that Roger is the Emergency Management Director. Three years ago, when I began this position, we didn't have a Department of Public Works. With the implementation of the reorganization plan, in May of 2011, we established the DPW, and I appointed Bill Coyle as the Director. I can say with confidence that the DPW we have today, developed in two and a half years, would not be as effective or efficient as it is without Bill Coyle at the helm. Bill is forward-thinking, creative, and a master of developing new techniques and processes to provide better services to this town at less cost with fewer resources. As DPW Director and Town Engineer, I can always count on Bill to provide thorough research and recommendations on any issue and always at the ready with a calculator to ensure the proper and efficient operation of the department. His Assistant DPW Director, Jeff Mitchell, along with his entire management team, with Kenny Fairbanks and Wayne Boomequist, have created a DPW of which we can all be proud and very confident. I thank Bill, his team, and all the DPW employees for their hard work every day of the year. Bill Waterman is a critical member of the management team as the IT Director. He not only provides technological support that I need to function, but he provides the technological support for this entire administration. In three short years, Bill has brought this administration into the 21st century by implementing technological advancements that enable us to operate and manage efficiently while providing the mechanism to improve our processes and communicate quickly in real time with the public. That's important. One of the first things I was told when I came here is we needed to step up the communications, and Bill has worked to do that. I thank you, Bill, for everything you've done to further our goals and for tolerating my technology ideas, which I'm sure drive you crazy every now and then, but it's much appreciated. Adam Burney is the newest department head. He's a valuable member of the management team. Adam is a multi-talented and multidisciplined, overseeing a wide range of functions, including planning, economic development, inspectional services, green energy, public health, and I could go on and on. Adam's a very talented, pragmatic, and reliable employee. I'm fortunate to have him on my team, and the town benefits greatly from his knowledge. The entire department provides a wide range of services to the public in an efficient manner. The division heads I have not yet mentioned specifically are equally as important to the operations of this administration as are every employee who is an employee of the town of Auburn. Division Heads Deb DuBois, Darlene Coyle, Nick Antanovic, Chris Hugo, Larry Corbin, Kristen Pappas, Terry Lolax, Cindy Cosgrove, Marie Sullivan, Diane Ramsey, and our Town Cork, Ellen Gabriel. Thank you for your support every day. Thank you for your ability to run your departments and to serve the public. And thanks to all the employees in your divisions for the hard work they do every day for the citizens of Auburn. The clerical support that I receive from my office staff is invaluable to the operations of the town. I want to thank Sharon Kwiatowski, Pat Bure, Patty Bureau Guard, and Sister Trosina. They are the backbone of my office as well as that of the Board of Selectmen. Thank you all for what you do for me and for the community. These directors and division heads are not only managers, but they're leaders. And I thank you all for being there for me, not just tonight, but every day. And you're also there for the town, year in, year out, every day, no matter what happens. I thank you for your support, your commitment, and your dedication, and I would not be able to accomplish my goals without you. And I would say that I would not have had a contract renewed and be reappointed if it wasn't for all of you. The last three years have gone by so quickly, yet when I look back at what we've done, the last three years are marked by rapid progress, reforms, and efficiencies. I'm so proud of our accomplishments that we've done together as a team, and I'm excited to take on the new challenges that may be ahead of us. I'm often asked, and no matter where I go, I'm asked this question, am I happy if I took this position? And I want to just state for the record that unequivocally, I respond yes. As a matter of fact, I can truly say from my heart that I love this job and I love Auburn. I'm fortunate to work for this Board of Selectmen, who's committed to progress, sets clear policies, and develops strong goals for themselves and for me and my team, which supports the initiatives of our administration. I thank the Chair. I thank every member of the Board of Selectmen for their advice and their guidance. There is no greater compliment than being asked by other communities for information on our programs or policies, or sometimes worse, having our employees recruited by headhunters. And I'll fight them before they'll take our employees, but it is a compliment to have other town managers, other communities contact us to find out what we're doing in DPW, what we're doing in police, what we're doing in fire. There is no greater compliment and there's no greater value than to have other communities look up to you. We've engaged a great team. We have great leadership, and we have great elected officials. You're thoughtful, you're engaged, you're a wonderful Board of Selectmen, and I appreciate it. In the last three years, I've met scores of residents and businesspeople and developed professional relationships as well as new friendships in this town. I'm grateful for the advice and guidance of the Board of Selectmen as well as those of you in the community who've taken the time to come in over the last three years and talk to me, and there have been hundreds, and express their thoughts, concerns, and suggestions. Thank you for reappointing me. Thank you for ratifying my contract. And thank all of you who are here tonight, as well as those in the Auburn community, for your support and confidence. I'm looking forward to continuing as town manager in this fine community and to working with the Board of Selectmen to further our collective goals. I'm honored and humbled to serve in this capacity, and I am committed to working diligently every day to continue to earn your support and respect over the next few years. Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you very much. Just going to ask for a motion for a very brief recess so we can let anyone who wants to go go.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? We're in recess for two minutes. We're going to move on with the remainder of the agenda. The next item we have is public comment, and we have Sonia Carr, who signed up for public comment. Good evening. If you could just give your name and address for the record, please.
Okay, I'm Sonia Carr. I was a resident of Auburn for many, all my life, just about, but I'm now living in North Oxford. I'm here tonight to promote the Images of America Auburn book. On behalf of the Auburn Historical Society, we have put out this book. We worked very hard on it for all last year. And it is a history of Auburn with pictures. We have two hundred and, let's see, one hundred and twenty-seven pages of pictures, history, and it's just a wonderful, wonderful book. And it is going to be available at the Auburn Historical Museum, which is at 41 South Street in Auburn. And we are open on Tuesdays and Saturdays, 9:30 to 12:30. So we hope that everybody that doesn't know about it now will come because this is available for quite some time. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And I just want to say, I picked up my copy on Saturday and got lost in it on Saturday afternoon. What great, great history, Auburn's history in that book, from schools to municipal buildings to athletics, just people in town. It's a fabulous book, and I actually have to get another one because I gave that one I got Saturday to someone else.
Oh, that's wonderful.
So it's a great book. Mr. Simone?
Just for anyone who's watching, who's interested, I assume there's a cost, and could you tell people what it is so they would know?
You'll find, yeah, when you come to the museum.
Okay, all right. That's fair enough. Thanks.
Yes, okay. Thank you.
Very nice. Just as a quick follow-up, I was there at their open house on Saturday, and they've done a phenomenal job in building a tunnel square at 41 South Street. I urge everybody to go over and take a walk through and see the history of the town of Auburn. There's trinkets over there, there's exhibits, there's pictures, there's stories, something you have learned a lot myself over there with some of the things that they've come forward with. So please, I urge everybody to get over there and take a look through the museum and see what it is, and you'll be amazed.
And I just want to say, I feel bad Mrs. Carr was put on the spot. I had told her that she couldn't mention the price because we can't...
That's all right.
...use a public building to promote the sale of an item, but it was informational so that we can share the information out there. But ethics prohibits us from using this building to sell the book. Mr. Simone?
Just one other comment. I piggyback on what Mr. Holstrom said. Mostly, you remember that last spring, I spent several months with Mr. Holstrom doing the town markers. And, you know, I spoke to what a great opportunity it was to learn more about Auburn's history from him during that time we spent together. After the time I spent with Mr. Ethier, I went and took the tour at the Historical Museum with Sarie, and I forgot her last name. I can't...
Bittix, yes.
Exactly. Bittix. And even after all the time I spent with Mr. Ethier, I still learned unbelievably more about the town, its history, and all the different things. So same, you know, pretty much the same as Mr., it's time well-spent, it's, you know, it's information about the town that is all collected in a very easy place to go down and have someone walk through with you and explain things to you, answer your questions. Pretty cool for, you know, a few minutes on a Saturday, so...
It's a great resource. Thank you for letting us know about the book. Next, we have Darlene Coyle.
Hi, good evening. Darlene Coyle, Director of Board of Health. I just wanted to let the board know and let the public know in response to the recent widespread notification about flu across the country and across Massachusetts, we are offering another chance to get a flu shot. We're doing a public flu clinic at the Auburn Mall this Saturday, January 18th, and that's going to be from 10:00 a.m. when the mall opens to 4:00 p.m. in the afternoon. Again, this Saturday, January 18th, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. We're going to be located right outside the food court, right where Macy's Home Store is, where Santa usually is situated. And we will have our public health nurses, we'll be giving free flu shots. We encourage anybody that has been thinking about it or still needs a flu shot, or you've got a family member, please come on down. We encourage everybody to still get vaccinated. The flu season extends right up until April and sometimes May. So believe it or not, it's, again, not, we want to be able to offer those flu shots to anybody that wants them. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Next item we have is a change of manager at AMF Bowling, 101 Southbridge Street. That was a 7:00 p.m. hearing. Is there a motion to open the hearing?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. Is there a motion regarding...
Motion to approve the change of manager.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. Thank you for waiting.
Thank you.
Next item we have is change of manager. Colony One Incorporated, 683 Southbridge Street. That was a 7:05 hearing. Is there a motion to open the hearing?
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. Is there anyone here from Colony One? If you could come up to the microphone, please. Just give your name and address to the record and let the board know why you're here tonight.
Haley Freitas, 215 Packett Street. And I'm just here to change the management over to myself.
Also in your packet, you have an email from the chief. He has no objections to the transfer. You have documents from the Board of Directors that they have authorized this change of manager. Are you currently working there?
Yep.
Yep, okay. Are there any questions or comments? Is there any public question or comment? Is there a motion to close the hearing?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. The hearing is closed. Is there a motion regarding the...
Make a motion. We approve the change of the manager. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. Thank you for waiting.
Thank you.
Next item we have is change of manager. Colony One Incorporated, 683 Southbridge Street. That was a 7:05 hearing. Is there a motion to open the hearing?
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. Is there anyone here from Colony One? If you could come up to the microphone, please. Just give your name and address to the record and let the board know why you're here tonight.
Haley Freitas, 215 Packett Street. And I'm just here to change the management over to myself.
Also in your packet, you have an email from the chief. He has no objections to the transfer. You have documents from the Board of Directors that they have authorized this change of manager. Are you currently working there?
Yep.
Yep, okay. Are there any questions or comments? Is there any public question or comment? Is there a motion to close the hearing?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted? The hearing is closed. Is there a motion regarding the-
Make a motion, we approve the change of the manager.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted? Thank you for waiting.
Thank you.
Can I, I'll entertain a motion to move up Agenda Item 9A1, Auburn Youth and Family Services, one day beer and wine license.
Motion to move up Agenda Item 9A1, one day beer and wine license for Auburn Youth and Family Services.
And there's a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted? Sally, if you can come up, please. In your packet, you have the paperwork. We just, we have a couple more hearings that may take eight or 10 minutes, so I just wanted to get you through here. In your packet, you have the application, you have the tip certification, you have the comments from DCG and the liquor liability insurance binder. The only thing I'm, maybe I'm missing it is, and you can still get it to us, we had, we had adopted a policy that it doesn't have to be an engineer's drawing, but we need a diagram of where the alcohol will be.
I actually have one with me.
Great, if you can give it to Sharon and she can make some copies. Probably so we can close the, close the hearing. So Sally, if you can tell us a little bit about what's going on.
We're, on February 1st, on Saturday, we're, Auburn Youth and Family Services is sponsoring our event, Dancing with the Stars of Auburn. The event will be held at 444 Washington Street. We're in, we have about 450 tickets, we're expecting about 450 people at this year. This community has lots of talent, there's lots of people that are dancing, and we've added alumni dances this year as well. So it'll be good evening with food, gifts and raffle items, and the monies, the proceeds will be used for the services and programs of Auburn Youth and Family Services.
Great. Are there any questions, Mr. Crossman?
Sally, since last year, Michael Wade has taken on selling thrifty cars in the parking lot. Is that going to create a problem for parking?
Not at all. We're going to, last year we had valet parking, we're still going to use our elite valet parking, and Mr. Wade has met with Nick from Inspection Services, and they have that all worked out, so we don't anticipate any difficulties with parking.
Have you designated a certified crowd manager, I believe?
Yes, that will be John Lynch. He did it last year as well.
And he has a certificate that he can provide?
Yes.
Thank you.
We will get that to you, yes.
Just to keep it with the packet.
Thank you.
Are there any other board comments or questions? Are there any public comment or questions?
Just for me.
Mr. Simontian.
You, I just want to make sure that you have all, are aware of all the conditions from the DCG for the one-day license. Have you seen the, what we have in our packet from the DCG? They have three bullet items that are conditions?
You need to obtain the Board of Health permits.
Yes.
The building and fire inspectors shall visit the location to inspect the setup.
Right, I haven't, I did not see that letter yet, but I, I will definitely get a copy of that.
Thank you. Just, there's three bullets there I just want you to be aware of.
Thank you. Yes, I will be working with, I'll be giving Darlene a list of all the restaurants that are participating, and she'll be checking for the permits.
And you have the diagram of where it would be set up per our policy?
Yes.
Is there anything else? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve a license, provided that all applicable requirements of the state and town, any of its departments, boards and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all the conditions stated upon it. Failure to comply with any and all conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void, and with the conditions of the DCG to be placed on the license.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted? Thank you very much for your support. Thank you. We are going to go back to public hearings and presentations. We have Bill Coyle, DPD, DPW Director, I'm sorry, the New Salt Management Program.
Good evening, members of the board, Julie, Ed, and Sharon. Make sure we can see this. About a week ago, Ms. Jacobson asked me to prepare a presentation for the Board of Selectmen and for the general public on Town of Auburn's Snow and Ice Roadway Program. With the assistance of the Assistant Town Engineer, Joanna Paquin, we prepared this presentation for you this evening. Should take about 15 to 20 minutes, so if you could bear with me. The objective of the DPW is to maintain the roads in a safe and passable condition while minimizing costs and environmental impacts. All three of these are significantly important to us, primarily the safety of the general public is the main objective, but also cost and environmental impacts are considered as well when we look at our roadway program. Back in May of 2011, when the town formed the DPW, myself, the Assistant DPW Director, Jeff Mitchell, and Kenny Fairbanks, the Highway Superintendent, met with area communities to look at other alternatives over and above what we were currently doing. So we researched what had been done in the previous five years, and we found that there was significant amount of sand and salt usage, and this was actually very common throughout the Commonwealth, and recently newer methods have come to light that are more efficient. And we're currently using a treated salt, which is called Clearlane, and it's a, it's basically salt treated with magnesium chloride. And when we first started this program, we had some concerns about the material, and what we tried to get out there and educate the public was that the magnesium chloride is actually a material that's sold as a, sold as a pet alternative to salt usage. So the additive was something that's actually better for the environment, and the material itself is endorsed by the EPA. So using this product, we were able to calibrate our trucks and minimize the use of sand. Now, one thing I will say is that sand still has its uses with fighting the snowstorms and inclement weather, in particular during a freezing rain event. If it's a heavy rain and it's freezing on contact, to put down salt in those situations, quite often it'll dissolve in the rain and will be ineffective. The sand is marginally effective because itself will also wash down the drains and freeze over as well. In that particular type of storm, there's not much that works effectively, other than to keep reapplying the material. Some communities have actually have adopted that even in those cases, they won't use the sand, they'll continue using salt, but I think it's, each community has to weigh that decision individually. So as a result of this change, it resulted in over 5,000 tons of sand being eliminated from our streets per year, and that represents 156 tractor trailer loads of sand no longer being dumped on our town roads. And what does this mean to the Town of Auburn? Well, one of the major things that it means is there is less sand in our wetlands, in our lakes, ponds, and drainage infrastructure. This slide represents a drainage ditch. This actually looks like water, that's actually sand that has accumulated over the years that we have cleaned out since obviously this slide was, the picture was taken. This is a head wall with the outlet is almost completely submerged by sand, again, had to be cleaned and sand removed. And this is a drainage pipe on, I believe this is on Warwick Street, that we had complaints of the drainage was not working. You can see a small hole right here where we tried to go through with a snake through the sewer department, and we found after probably an hour or two that this was plugged up solid, and we had to remove about 1,000 feet of drain line in order to get the drainage running again. That obviously is, you're not going to clean that pipe based on the amount of sand, and unfortunately, we have found that quite often throughout the town, and as it becomes a problem, we've replaced those pipes as well. I've had, and you can see that pipe is rusted completely around. I've had pipes where the pipe is like brand new, it was corrugated metal pipe, and we tried to pick the pipe up vertical and just shake the sand out, but it was to no effort, and perfectly good pipe had to be replaced because there was too much sand in that pipe. So the product that we're now using, that we refer to as green salt, is Clearlane Enhanced Eisa, designed for the environment and endorsed by the EPA. The benefits of this material is the, it is effective for lower freezing temperatures, it is effective as far down as zero degrees. When we start getting the temperatures around five degrees, then we start looking at using sand, because below zero degrees, the material, you would need probably 10 times the amount of salt for it to be effective. So the lower the temperature, the more salt that is needed. So in that particular instance where you're at zero, we would look at adding sand to the mix, and also this material has a corrosive inhibitor also added to the material, and is three times less likely to corrode your vehicle than salt. There's less scatter, there's a tackifier that's added to the material. Our goal is to try to keep this material in the roadway and not bouncing off into the grass and onto the shoulders of the road where it's no longer effective. In addition to the treated salt that we're using, the other item that we have recently put in place are the computerized units, the Cyrus units. If you recall, we went to town meeting this fall to have $20,000 appropriated towards the funding of two of these units. We have nine trucks on the road, large trucks, we have one pickup truck as well for some side streets, that nine of these trucks on the road, five of them currently have these Cyrus units in place. The benefit of this unit is that it allows you to enter into the computer what the application rate is going to be of the material. The reason that's important is, in the past, with the older trucks, you would depend on the operator to put down as much material as needed to basically melt the snow. The problem with that is, is you don't know how much material that was. You knew it melted it, but you don't know what was put down. Did they put down twice as much as they needed to melt the snow, or we rate where we need to be? And we feel that the current rate that we're at now, even though it may still have some tweaking, the 600 pounds per lane, per center lane mile, or 300 pounds per lane mile is a good application rate. The other benefits of this computerized system is it adjusts with the speed of the vehicle. So as the vehicle slows down, the material slows down. The vehicle stops, the material stops. So it's a consistent application rate versus, again, with the truck, if the vehicle slows down and the operator is tired, worked a lot of hours, and doesn't slow down the application rate, and I'm sure we've all seen at a stop sign, you have a large pile of sand or salt dumped in front of you. The computer doesn't take away the knee of our operators to be aware of where the hazards exist and the safety issues exist. All of our operators know where their shop curves are, they know where there's steep hills are that need extra treatment, and they're able to do that, as you'll see in a future slide, through a blast feature that the computer allows as well. Keep in mind that four of our trucks do not have these units, so if you do see different treatment rates in town, there are different trucks out there, different styles, some computerized, some are not. We're trying to even get the older trucks calibrated to put down the same application rate, but we are ultimately looking to get all of our trucks using this, this system. This is something that's relatively new to towns in this area. The Mass DOT is using this in certain areas, and I believe the city of Lowell is currently using these, and I believe the Town of Natick may be using it as well, but for a community in this region, I believe we're the only town that has gone to this, to this computerized system. There's other, other benefits that are mentioned there as well. The ability to generate reports at the end of the storm event, and also GPS coordinates overlaid on a Google Earth map, so we can track the vehicle, where it was, what the application rate was for that vehicle, what the width of the rate of the application was. What that does for us is as we drive around town and we see one road or area looks better than another area, we're able to compare that particular route, what was his application rate? Was he putting down a greater width, which is actually results in more material? We're able to compare that information. And then we, we hope that we will see a 20% reduction in the amount of material being This is typical of what you would see in the, in the truck. The first item here, the 600 pounds per, per lane mile, it's actually center lane, is what their trucks are programmed at currently. Most of the times, the trucks are able to drive down the center of the roadway, that'll change if it's during commuter traffic in a very heavily trafficked area. And then in the next area, the 1.2 lanes is the width of the application rate, that can change. If you're in an area like Brotherton Way, you may increase that to two or three lanes. Typically, you're not going to go as wide as how many lanes there are, so if you have two lanes, you're not typically going to go to two lanes, because that's going to put the sand, I mean, the salt beyond, into the shoulders and into the gutters. The other screen is basically, this is just a, a program where the, if there's any troubleshooting needed, we can access that, that area as well. These are reports that are generated at the end, and they're difficult to see, but essentially what this is showing us is how often the computer was in manual mode versus automatic, and in green, that's the automatic mode, so the entire time they stayed in one mode. In this slide here, you see the gray and the green. The gray is when they're in pass mode. What that does, if you're applying salt down a dead-end road, when you come out of that roadway, you don't want to treat it again, you have a button that you hit pass. And then the other bar diagram is the speed of the vehicle, which is traveling, and then in the end, we'll have a report that generates how much salt was used per truck, per storm, and we can compare how much was used per lane mile, because even though they're programmed at a set amount, that can still vary depending on how often they blast, and I think if I back up, this is the, there's the blast feature, so if they're in that trouble area where Upland Street, Appleton, Prospect, where they need additional precautions, they'll hit blast, and that'll put down twice as much material as it would normally, as it's applying the material down. So again, it does depend still on our operators to make sure that they are aware of any of the trouble areas, and I can say that our DPW employees do know where the problem areas are, and I think they're very aware of that. Post-storm, what we look at, this is a Google Earth map, every 15 seconds, we have coordinates of where that truck is. We can, we can click on any of these thumbtacks, and it'll tell us where they were, what the application rate was, what the width of the application was, so that gives us the ability, again, to compare. If one area looked different than another, we can go back to the program and try to find out, why did that area look different? Was something being done differently there? Was the application rate the same as, as the other area? Was the width different than what was being treated? So it gives us the ability to tweak the program, to come up with an optimal application rate. Quickly, I'll just touch upon during a storm, how, how we get our staff moving and treating the roadway in an effective manner. Initially, before the storm starts, we'll send out 10 DPW employees to treat all the roadways. That typically takes one to two hours for them to go out, salt all the roads. Depending on the storm, we may wait until the snow arrives to send everybody out, and it's just starting to snow. If we know we're going to get a foot of snow or are going to get hit with a blizzard, and we know that that storm is definitely going to happen, and they're in, and you can go on and check the radar, and it's in Munson right now, we're going to send the guys out now. We're not going to wait till it's here, we know it's coming, let's get them out there. It'll depend on the forecast. If there's a 40% probability of snow at 2:00 AM, we're not going to send them out until it starts to snow, because we don't want to waste the material as well. Once they've gone out and pretreated the roadways, depending on the intensity of the storm, Kenny Fairbanks will start calling the rest of the DPW members in if it's after hours and telling them to get ready for plowing operations. Typically, two to three inches of snow on the road, we'll start plowing. We'll have 21 town employees and 10 private contractors plowing. It takes three hours to plow the entire town once. So if this is a continuous storm similar to the blizzard last February, they started plowing with two to three inches down, they plowed for 30 hours straight. And I can just ask any of you to try to sit and do your job for 30 hours straight, it's a long time. They, I do emphasize to them, if they're tired, they need to come back to the yard to take a break, come back and take a break. So if they need to sleep for an hour, they get 30-minute breaks. If they haven't taken a break in, in 15, 20 hours, they can come in and just sit at their truck where it's not comfortable, but try to, try to at least rest so they're able to get back out there. A lot of the guys don't do that, a lot of guys just keep on going. I think the adrenaline just keeps, keeps them working sometimes. I think the adrenaline just keeps them working sometimes. Once the storm is completed and we've plowed all the roadways, we then move into also plowing all the municipal parking lots. We plowed the town hall, the library, the senior center, the high school, every school building, every school parking lot. There are 200 lane miles that we plow in town. And there are 24 miles of sidewalks that we plow in town. Once the roads are done, some of the crew will go to the parking lots. Two or three of the DPW members will go to the sidewalks. And after working 30 hours straight, they then start plowing sidewalks, hoping if there is going to be school the next day, that we at least get the sidewalks in the immediate area around the schools open and ready and safe for the kids. We don't plow 24 miles of sidewalks in four hours. So we've worked with the school superintendent to identify the priority areas that are most important to the school for the kids walking to school. So once the storm is over and the employees have had the chance to rest, we will then continue on plowing the sidewalks, which can take several days depending on the amount of snow that falls. The current snow and ice program provides safer streets, less environmental impacts, is more cost-effective. There's less sand purchased, there's less time to cover the roots. In the past, it used to be three truckloads to hit each root. Now we're at one truckload. Lower fuel cost, less wear and tear on the vehicles, less sand to sweep up in the spring. And this is significant because less sand to dispose of. I believe the cost is about $20 a ton to dispose of the sand properly. Less time spent on cleaning catch basins. Drainage lines are not plugged up with sand. The wetlands and ponds are not filled with sand. Again, sand, in my opinion, is still necessary in some instances and we will continue to use it, but again, on a case-by-case basis. Guidelines for the residents, some suggestions, observe the parking ban. From November 15th to April 15th, you're not supposed to park on the streets overnight. I can tell you there's many times when I'm called upon from some of the DPW employees when they're trying to plow a street to go to a house and I'll knock on their door and they ask them to move their vehicle. Sometimes it's at 1:00 in the morning, but it's important to get the roads cleared. If I can't get to somebody, then the police will be contacted and we'll ask them to see if they can have the vehicle moved. Last resort would be to tow it, but we try not to tow vehicles if we don't have to. Use reflectors to delineate areas of concern. This is important to anyone who has a particular concern about their lawn. If there's a foot of snow on the ground, the operators can't see through the snow. They do the best they can not to dig up lawns and impact your property. But if you have a specific concern, put the reflectors out. It's not going to guarantee it because even again, if the snow is coming down at an inch or two inches per hour, it's difficult to see. And they're not hitting anybody's lawn or mailboxes on purpose. So that does help. Stay off the roads during the storm whenever possible. What happens with long-duration storms, you can get snowpack, which builds up on the roads if everybody's out driving on the roads, especially similar to the storm we had about a week or so ago. We went on for about 36 hours straight. We were actually on more hours straight than we were from the blizzard. Because I came in 1:30 AM on Thursday and left. I think we left around 3:30 on Friday afternoon. So with all this traffic driving on the roads, you're unable to scrape them down, it packs it down. So you can see, you can drive around with the other area towns. We all have the same issues. Obviously, some people have to get on the road, they have to go to work. If you can stay off the roads, that would be great. Shovel snow on the left side facing the driveway. It doesn't make a lot of sense to throw the snow downstream when they're plowing the roadway. They're going to push it right back into your driveway, so try to shovel upstream. And do not shovel or snowblow or plow snow into the street. It's very frustrating after being out there for many hours and watching the roads the snowblowers blowing the snow right back in the road. And again, it's primarily for the safety of the residents. We're trying to keep the roads as clear as we can. If possible, remove snow around the fire hydrants and catch basins. And ultimately, to report any snow-related concerns, please call the highway division at 508-832-7814. Thank you, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Bill, for that presentation. Quite a lot of information there. Do any members have any comments or questions? Mr. Simone and then Mr. Holstrom.
Early on in the presentation, you showed some areas where the sand had affected drainage and things of that nature. So I guess my question is, because I've lived in places where they do it, how does something get to that point? I've lived in places where they do routine inspections to, and in the exact words of the DPW director, he said, "It's better to do it now when there's hardly anything there than wait till it's impacted like that and it costs that much more to clean out a pipe or a drain." So do we have a process to make sure that this doesn't happen in the future?
I think a couple of things. One is the fact that we've eliminated 5,000 tons of sand in the past two years. Each year, on average, this shouldn't happen. Your catch basins have sumps in them, typically a three-foot sump. So once the sand flows into the catch basin settles out, we go in annually now and clean the catch basins. You know, we actually have another map throughout the town that shows every catch basin in town. And you can click on it and it'll tell you when it was cleaned. So it's another program that we're working with through Stormwater Management to make sure we're cleaning all the catch basins and our drain lines. So we've come a long ways to ensure that the drainage structures in the system is being maintained so that this doesn't happen again.
All right. And do you know ballpark what the cost of 30,000 pounds of sand and salt is?
Thirty thousand pounds?
Yeah, based on the numbers you had up there, you said over a three-year period, you had eliminated five, just under 5,000 tons per year over, so around 2012, roughly three years. So that comes out to about 30,000 pounds in that timeframe. I'm just curious.
The salt, to purchase the salt, I believe is about $11 to $12 a ton. So if we've eliminated 5,000 tons a year, you're talking roughly $60,000 per year in sand. That's just to purchase it. Now you need to clean it up at the end of the year.
So just with what we've saved on not having to purchase it and not having to clean it up, what are we doing with that as far as the DPW? Or, you know, what is that savings translating into for the town? Where are we using?
It's still early to say because we've only had two winters completely that have gone through this. This is our third winter. The first winter, we had a very mild winter. The second winter last year was the fifth worst on record. So I think this being the third winter, I think we'll start to see in average where we stand. You've got to keep in mind, in the past, they would always deficit spend. So they may have been spending $350,000 or $360,000 in a year. So if we're at 290 or 300, it just may mean that you deficit spend less currently.
So those numbers are a projection and they're not concrete? That's what you?
No, these are real numbers.
So that's what I'm saying, based on that right there, from 2012 to 2014, that number shows roughly just under 5,000 tons per year that we haven't used and haven't had to clean up. So we had to have seen some type of savings from that.
Absolutely. What you'll see is if you look at some of the past budgets, you'll see that in previous years, there were $365,000. And we've been, this past year, I think we budgeted around $294,000. So what I'm saying is we wouldn't have the deficit spend like they used to. So there is a savings.
I'm sorry, I mean, so it just translates to money we haven't spent versus real money that we've been able to spend on something else?
And there's other benefits. We saved, I would say, about a month last year in sweeping. We finished sweeping in the middle of June versus the middle of July. And there's still a lot of residual sand out there that gets washed out off the lawns. So it's saving us in manpower and staff. So when we're creating these facilities, divisions, that's taking two people away from me full-time. We're able to supplement a little bit of that time based on savings on reducing the amount of sand that we have to sweep. And that typically takes three or four employees for a month. So you can do the math, if you're saving three or four employees for a month's time, that's a significant savings.
I understand that. I ask you for the sole purpose of that, it's one of the questions that I hear all the time. We hear about this money was saved, that money was saved, what does it translate into? So I ask that question from the standpoint of the taxpayers in town. So they understand where we're seeing the savings, where we're seeing, you know, less of a cost or whatever it is. So I appreciate it.
Absolutely, thank you.
Yeah, I threw the show. Bill, you've got a great program here. I had a chance to come over and see it a few weeks ago. And now I see a few more of the numbers here. The technology is just incredible as compared to what it was over the past years. And I know that we always kind of grit our teeth and say, oh, we've got an investment here. But now you can see that we've had some great savings because of those initial investments. And I would say, you know, keep the benefits coming because we're doing well with that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do any board members have anything else on this?
If I may, just to further clarify on the savings aspect of the program, and certainly I think Bill has done a great job in identifying that. I think historically, I think we've recognized over the years that our snow and ice budget has not been adequately funded because we're deficit spending every year. Those dollars have to come from the savings somewhere else in the budget. Historically, it's come from the reserve account. That's why we made an effort at the Fall Town meeting to increase our snow and ice by an additional 50 so the need to transfer a year-end becomes that much less. The savings that Bill has realized here allows him then to try to live within the snow and ice budget. And if it's exceeded, it's offset by the savings that has been realized through this program. So I think, Bill, you hit the nail on the head. If you look historically over the last several years, we had to transfer as much as $150,000 to $200,000 from various accounts to offset that year-end deficit. In some cases, we were reimbursed from FEMA for snow expenses that qualify under a declaration of emergency. So I think this translates into permanent savings that we can now use as an offset to our total cost.
Mr. Simone.
So that would just be, we would not be transferring similar songs on an annual basis for the specific purpose?
Well, it all depends on the number of storms, the frequency of storms.
I understand. I mean, if this were the ideal situation, if those were the numbers year over year, that's what we typically could expect to see. We know that, you know, obviously, nothing's covered in the storm. There are more storms, less storms. That happens every year, we live where we live, it is what it is. So I'm just saying, if that was the ideal scenario where it never changed, that's what we would expect to see typically on an annual basis. And then you said there's what, four trucks that don't have the computer systems? But eventually, you want to try and get there. So would that further?
Well, the thing is, some of the trucks are very old that we probably wouldn't put that newer equipment in those. I believe we have another new truck coming online for next winter. So that'll bring us down to six with them, three without at that point.
Thank you, Bill.
And I just want to say one thing, I'd want to thank the DPW employees because this has been a lot of change for them. And when you're used to a certain way of doing your job for some of them 20 years or longer, it's been a lot for them to accept this and change this. And they've shown a lot of willingness and they've worked with us. And I do appreciate the amount of hours they work as well. I think sometimes we don't realize how many hours that they're out there for. So I want to thank them for all their hard work as well. But thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Bill. Mr. Plutokas? On this item? Sure.
Ball, Plutokas, 231 Milbury Street. Sometimes hands don't communicate with each other. And I think Bill's doing a great job. But in some cases, engineering or design has put some poor designs on our roads and our curb cuts. And I was driving up Milbury Street in a snowstorm a few years ago. And I've shared this with Bill. And you cannot tell as you're coming out of charmet where the curb is. Presently, it juts out into the road instead of being a smooth cut up the hill. Now, I know Milbury Street hopefully will be paved in the future and this will be eliminated. The truck in front of me almost tipped over. It in fact hit that curb, not being able to see it being covered with snow, and almost tipped over. So I hope that as Bill's workers are out there, that they're communicating with the planning board or other departments that design these curb cuts that go out. Because the last thing you need, having grown up in the Northeast, is when you're going up a hill and you're starting from a stoplight, you don't want to be turning your wheel to the left or to the right. You want to be going straight ahead. Well, the way that's designed, it's a crazy design anyway, coming from the center of town across the light up Milbury Street. It's not straight ahead anyway. So you have to first turn your wheel to the left and then you're going straight up. And then that curb is there and you've got to turn it again to the left before you get to the top of the hill. And I've seen several cars not make that final one, not having the proper tires on. But it's a, instead of having a smooth transition, just a few feet cut off of that curbing could save someone's life someday. And, you know, we have a lot of accidents in that area. I've seen people up on the sides of the hills on Milbury Street quite often. In fact, it was just a month ago, there was two girls there in the middle of the night that had an accident, I called the police. You couldn't even see them as you came across the street, everything was so dark. The second comment I want to make, and I'm not sure if Bill's responsible for it or not, but I was coming back in a snowstorm, the heavy one earlier this year. And I went, I was coming from Westboro. And the snow was about three inches deep in Westboro. I came into Shrewsbury on Route 20 the whole time. Again, it was still three inches deep and it hadn't been treated or it seemed like it hadn't been, didn't seem like it was plowed. I came across the Auburn border and the ground was wet pavement. It was absolutely perfect. I mean, it was just like it was a rainstorm. So you could delineate the border where you were in, two or three inches of snow for 15 miles, and all of a sudden it was dry pavement going up Route 20. Now, I don't know who's responsible for that, but they deserve to be complimented. Oh, sorry. That's all I have to say, thank you. I hope that these departments, when they notice problem areas in town, such as that curb cut, should have never been allowed to jut out like that.
I'll just mention, I'll follow up on your comment about the planning board and people talking to each other. You know, not only have I witnessed, but I've had a recent conversation with Mr. Coyle. He does attend these planning board meetings and has input. And if we're contacted, which I was recently, by residents who have concerns of an ongoing project, have they thought of what will happen in the ice? I share it with Bill and Bill's told me that he's addressed it with the board and made some recommendations. So he is very proactive working with planning in town.
Great, and I just may mention it again when you start to pave the street. Thank you very much.
We have a couple of quick gift acceptances here. The fire, I'll go back to my, the fire department from anonymous, the fire department gift account and the amount of $200.
Motion to accept.
Any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted? From Howie Goodrich to Kathleen Sabina Animal Compound and the amount of $100. Any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted? Next, we have a member item, an update on the wind turbine project. Mr. Simone has requested this item. And I believe we have Mr. Bernie in attendance who's going to go first.
Yeah, so we've had this item on the agenda a couple of times. And I just don't, from my perspective, we talk about it and I don't see where we're moving forward with this project. Now, I don't know what the next step is because I don't have a project plan, which is something I guess I would really like to see. What the next step is, I've never seen a project that didn't have a project plan. Here's A, here's B, how do I get from A to B? Here's all the steps that are involved. And everyone on the project team knows exactly where the project is at any given time. I mean, this is, we've had state-level politicians involved in helping us get grants. We've had all these other things going on. And when I first got on the board, three and a half years ago, it was, we need to get the Met Tower up, we need to get the road built. We went through the dance with Home Depot, finally got the acceptance, built the road, put up the Met Tower, got the data. Those were the steps as I knew it. And I spoke with members of the Alternative Energy Committee, attended some of their meetings back in that timeframe, the first one to two years I was on the board. And it seemed like it was pretty clear that once we had the data and it was confirmed that it was a viable place to build and it was confirmed that it was a viable place to build a wind turbine and a good place to do this, that we were going to move forward with putting up this wind turbine and seeing the savings and all the other things that have been discussed over and over for at least, I think, five years now. So I don't see that we've moved any since the last time this was on the agenda, which was, I think, about three months ago.
It was actually August. And so what I can tell you is where we are, we have a grant to do the feasibility study. The feasibility study is done in, we'll call it three phases. It's technically four per the contract. It's the installation of the Met Tower, the gathering of data, the draft feasibility study, the final feasibility study, and then a business plan that uses information gathered from the final feasibility study and the presentation of such to outline additional information. So in August, SED came to this board, presented the final feasibility study. And on, let me make sure I get my dates right. On August 13th, Matt Vanderbrook, our consultant from SED, submitted the business plan to the State Clean Energy Center. They have to approve the items and wording of the business plan prior to us expending funds on it. On the 20th of August, our CEC project manager responded to Mr. Vanderbrook, "Thanks for the business plan. I have to review it. I'll be back in touch with you soon." It was then, let's see. Looks like October 3rd was the next time she contacted him. Indicated that she had some additional comments, that she would get them to him shortly. And that's the last we've actually heard from her.
And that was what date?
That was October 3rd.
And has anyone followed up with her since?
Yes, we have.
Okay.
And so Matt emailed on the 12th of September, looking for a follow-up, on the 3rd of October, to which he was responded, and again on the 6th of December. I have called on 7 and 22 November, 17 December. I have emailed her once or twice. I submitted a reimbursement request. It took her almost two months to respond to that, indicating that we needed additional information. I provided that additional information within 24 hours of her response. At that point, I also further inquired about the business plan. I also contacted her, today's the 13th, about four days ago, to continue following up. I have done as much as I can do. I've phoned. I've left phone messages. I've phoned and found full voicemail boxes. I spoke with the town manager. She was going to reach out to a contact that she had who sits on the CEC board. And without their approval to move forward on the business plan, we can't move forward. So what the business plan is, is there's four items that were presented to the CEC as part of what the town and SED thinks is the appropriate way to move forward. Some community outreach, to talk to people who live in the area, other members of town, just to put out the findings, give additional information on what the project is about. There was a resident who requested a balloon float to identify the height of the proposed wind turbine. The balloon float is part of the business plan at this time. SED has the materials to do so. They feel that the grant allows for that to be included. So the balloon would be flown for 24 to 48 hours to identify what the final hub or blade height will be. Detailed shadow flicker assessment, that's one of the general concerns anytime you place this, especially on an elevated location. The Granger Cliffs are significantly higher than all residences that abut it. So shadow flicker could be a potential problem for those people. The detailed assessment would take into account topography and flora that may impact or reduce shadow flicker. And finally, additional project financials. So exploring and fleshing out additional models of ownership and financing to identify what may be the most potent or feasible means of either installing or financing the project. Now, without all of this, the project can't, the Wind Alternative Energy Committee really can't make a solid recommendation to administration. And at that point, administration can approach this board about what they feel may be the appropriate course of action.
Is this, I don't understand. I mean, other communities seem to be able to put up wind turbines. And is this a typical response time for this? I'm assuming it's a state organization that we had to submit the business plan to?
It is a state organization. I would hope it's not a standard response time. The person who was our project manager was transferred to our project in May or June of this year. Previously, we had had excellent response from the CEC. So I don't know if it's this individual. I know the CEC recently moved offices. I'm not sure if that has some impact on it. I can't speak to what other communities have experienced, but this is, again, it's a feasibility study. The end of this is not going to guarantee that the town builds a wind turbine. It will give us all of the information to identify whether the site that we've identified is feasible. At that point, it's up to town meeting to authorize the funds and for the town to decide whether or not the project is something that they would wish to pursue.
Why? We're still talking about feasibility studies, and SED said that was done. Now, it seems that, once we get this business plan approved, then we have to wait for the business plan to be approved by this group, and then the flicker assessment will be done?
Correct.
And then this balloon will be put up?
Correct. These are additional items beyond the end of the final feasibility study. The grant that we received, the $85,000, encompasses the work included in the business plan. So the feasibility study has come back and said, yes, it's feasible. You could theoretically put a wind turbine there. Now, the business plan is to identify and bring some specificity to the community's concerns. The height of the turbine was brought forward as a concern. The amount of shadow flicker is always a concern, as well as financing. So what this does is it sort of dials in and addresses the majority of specific concerns. In addition, we filed for an additional grant from the CEC to do an acoustic study that's specific to, again, topography, foliage, and distance. Because some of the residents who live nearby have been concerned about audible and unaudible vibration and the impact it may have on their quality of life and the value of their homes. So the acoustic study would further explore that. That's an additional grant. We filed that at the end of August. I believe it was mailed on August 29th. So, again, we're waiting for the state to respond to us. It's not as if we sent everything in and said, okay, they'll get back to us eventually. We've pursued this in, over the past four months, in as much as we can without driving and camping outside of the CEC offices and waiting for someone to say, bring me to this person. I have never experienced a state agency taking this long to respond, especially at the back end of something. But there could be mitigating factors that I'm unaware of.
Mr. Holstrom?
Through the chair, one of the mitigating factors I'm seeing here is I have several documents from the past, going back August, September, and my latest one is November. And the concern in November was, in Article 3 in March 16, 2000 special town meeting, the land that we're talking about was, they were proposing a high school on at the time. And town council, evidently, I don't know if they were supposed to notify town council or ask them if, you know what, you're not going to use it as a high school property. Can they use it as a wind turbine site? Maybe we want to ask that question before we go any further with this and find out if the town will allow to go forward and use that piece of property as a wind turbine site.
We can certainly do that.
I think it would be in our best interest to be sure that we can use that site before we go any further and spend any money on any more studies or programs.
Have you finished, Mr. Holstrom?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Simoneon.
Yeah, through the chair, Mr. Holstrom. So I guess my question is, so now, at this stage in the game, five years down the road, we're going to go all the way back to the step of looking for a site to put it up. When we've already done feasibility studies on the proposed site, we've already collected data, we've already gone through the expense of building a road to access the tower, and now we're going to go back and look at another piece of property? I mean, for someone who's advocated not wasting money, that doesn't seem realistic.
Through the chair, I guess you don't understand what I'm saying. The town meeting, the special town meeting in 2000 had already appropriated money for a high school site. So now, can only you? On that site. We're not talking about another site, Steve. We're talking about the same site. They allowed money to be spent for a high school. But now, we should check with town council and find out if that site we can use as a wind turbine site, whether the law will allow us to use that as a wind turbine site or whether we have to go back to the town meeting and change the vote. I don't know that.
During one of the initial discussions, when I first got on the board, that came up as part of the discussion. And the commentary during that discussion was that that was not an issue, that town council had already been contacted.
I would have to check my notes.
So I don't, I mean, how could?
Mr. Bernie, listen to his response.
But I wasn't done. I don't understand how we could apply for a grant to the state and not have specifically, and not have done our homework to say, we're asking you to just hand us money to build a wind turbine, but we're not even sure if we can build it there.
Again, I would have to check my notes from when we originally applied. And any monies we've received are for exploration. We have not received any design or construction funds. So any funding for the design or construction of a wind turbine need to be identified at a future date. What we're looking at right now is only whether or not the site would support it, and upon supporting it, what the impacts on the surrounding area would be. Hence, the additional flicker study and the additional acoustic study.
Mr. Kessner?
I think I can resolve this. The town obtained two parcels of land for the vote that you are referring to, Mr. Holstrom. It was done through a pro tato award and actually ended up a challenge in Superior Court, and we came to a settlement. That property is owned by the town of Auburn. The vote to appropriate money subsequent to that has been rescinded by a vote at a town meeting. So the money, or the authorization, has reverted back. It's no longer on the books. So in my opinion, that property would be available and allowed for the construction installation of a wind turbine.
Thank you. I imagine we had explored that at the time. I just didn't recall what the outcome was.
Mr. Simoneon.
My last comment on this, and my frustration as a resident of Auburn is the same frustration that a lot of residents feel who have discussed this with me in that we, to some degree, seem to repeat the pattern in some cases, where we go full throttle, and we were all over the letter to Home Depot. We were all over building the road. We were all over spending all this money to do all of those things. And now, for lack of a better term, it seems like we're dragging our heels. I understand there are concerns. Again, I would ask the question, this has been going on for five years. Where were the people who have concerns five years ago? No one came forward. No one brought any of these concerns to the table. And now that we're in, we're down the road a good stretch, you know, because it kind of has the feel of the "not in my backyard" type of argument. So, you know, we will waste a lot of time and money if this project just gets killed. And I think it would be a shame to do that at this point.
Mr. Bernie.
Well, I think that a lot of the issues that have been raised are a result of the information provided in the feasibility study. And I think that that's often, the role of the feasibility study is to identify what the potential use of the site is. We didn't know what magnitude of turbine we were looking at. That affects the hub height. That affects visibility. That could potentially affect the noise. So some of these concerns do come out of the result of the feasibility study. As far as the timing, I agree. The last four months have been extremely frustrating. I would like to discharge this grant and have it off of my desk. But at the same time, this hasn't been a quick process at any point. The letter to Home Depot took almost a year to negotiate. The construction of the road took quite a while due to environmental factors. So it's not as if this is, this project's been screaming along. There's been a lot of substantial delays that are outside of anybody's hands. The Home Depot was a giant corporate bureaucracy. We couldn't have imagined that we were going to get a log skidder stuck in some milkshaky mud on a hill. I don't think anybody anticipated that the CEC wouldn't respond to us for months on end. So we're trying to, believe me, I want this to be at the point where somebody's making a recommendation and we're determining whether or not we're going to move forward with this project as much as you do. But I can't force the state to do it. And I'm working as diligently as I can to get them to respond. And that's, if we spend that money without their response, then we're responsible for it, and then we have additional budgetary issues. So any help that you can provide in tipping the state forward would be appreciated. And we would, you know, work with you. I can provide you with the contact information of the people that we're working with. But I have not seen hide nor hair of them, nor response, in at least two months. And even when they're responding, it's a very short, very, you know, curt. We have these, we have concerns. We'll get to you soon. So I welcome any suggestions that you might have.
Have we reached out to either of our state legislators? I mean, they were instrumental in helping us secure the grant in the first place, so I...
At this point, that's something that was discussed. We thought that if we went to members of the CEC board prior to state legislature, we might continue to curry some goodwill. My concern with bringing legislators into rattle the cage of state employees is it may cause this delay, again, on future projects.
Just give your name and address to the record, please.
Rick Ringard, 288 South Street. I'll tell you what, the people that are just coming out of the woodwork. When that feasibility study came out in June, I started asking questions about it. I have over 100 pages of questions into the turbine committee that have not even been put on the agenda yet. So this isn't coming lately. This has been out there for a long time. And you have a copy of everything that I've sent. You have a copy of over 100 pages of questions, comments, and information that have to be addressed. The CEC, if you read their project manual, they are very specific. This committee is going to be out doing outreach in the town, and they've got to document it, and it's going to be ongoing before the CEC is going to give you any grants or work with you in any way. It's very specific. You can read the paragraph. It says, "Nothing will be done unless the applicant is holding ongoing documented meetings." None of those have been done. None of them. And the questions that I put to them have not been put on the agenda. And you've got a copy of all those, so this isn't anyone coming lately. This is a feasibility study that you had in June that the citizens of this town have not had the opportunity to comment on. And as far as the purchase of the land, it was specific for the high school. Certainly, you can build on it, but you're going to have to go back to the town meeting, I would assume, and rescind that article. It's got to be done before you can, I can't imagine how you could sign into contract until it's been rescinded to begin with. There are a whole lot of, there's 50 or 60 or 70 really good, easy questions like that, like the deed issue, that haven't been addressed. The Wind Turbine Committee has only met once. committee has only met once. They met in, in, I believe in June, when they first got the, got the feasibility study. They decided to table it, and because they hadn't had enough chance, they only had five or six days to look at it. So they decided to table it, and it's not come back up. They haven't even taken a vote. You wanna go forward with this thing. They haven't taken a vote. The people in this town haven't had a chance to make any comments on it. The people in the neighborhoods don't even know what's going on. And you, you wanna go forward with it. I don't understand.
Thank you, Mr. Bernie.
When do we get our chance to say whether we wanna do this thing or not?
Thank you, Mr. Ringardt. Mr. Simoneon.
There were public hearings held in the initial phases of the project, correct?
There were what?
Public hearings.
It was, it was brought to town meeting. Um, I, I've, I've read through pretty much everything that you've given us in the last five or six months. Some of it, some of it may be pertinent. Other, other, it, it seems to me that in, in a lot of what you've submitted, you're attempting to, and I'm no wind turbine expert, but just based on reading the information that you gave us, it seems to me that you're attempting to lump all wind turbines into one category and focus on some of the negative projects. I, I, I really don't see anything in any of the literature that you've submitted to us that puts a positive spin on wind turbines. So I, I have my, my point to you, Mr. Ringardt, while I appreciate your passion, is when I see, I always try to entertain both sides of any argument before I come to a decision. When I see someone who is doing nothing but presenting a negative side of an argument, to me, that raises red flags, as this is, this person just doesn't want it. Because I can't imagine that in six months of research, you've done quite a bit of research, I cannot imagine that in six months, you haven't come across anything positive that you could've submitted to us and said, "While I believe this, and this, and this to be true," here, there is a counterargument to that. Now, I've spoken to members of the alternative energy committee to Aston because of all the information that you submitted to us. And I've heard the, I've heard another side to the argument. Now, as far as their meeting schedule, I don't know anything about that. But I, you know, Mr. Hamill made a comment earlier about people working together. And this, this is an exact, of, of, "I'm, I'm gonna be on this side of the fence, I'm gonna be on that side of the fence, I'm gonna dig my heels in, and I'm not gonna work with you." That's what it seems to be from all the negative information that you've given.
Mr. Ringardt just stated that he hasn't had the opportunity to speak at the meetings, if, whether it's for scheduling purposes or whatever.
I understand that. But do you see my, you see my point? It's, everything you've given me has been negative, 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 anti-wind turbine. Everything.
At this point, I'm just trying to get on an agenda so that I can speak about it publicly.
Well, we, we have the chair of the alternative energy committee here. So I, I would, and it's not to me to make the decision, but I would ask the chair to please ask Mr. Plutuchus to come over and address this.
Wouldn't it, wouldn't it be nice if the chair of the committee would put these items on the agenda? Now, he's already got them, and he's already got this letter telling him what they are, and they still aren't on any agenda. They haven't even, we, we've, I have a lot of questions about this. And I, and I have a lot of different points that towns have come up with that need, we need to think about. One of them, in the, in the first packet that I gave you, one of them is that there is technology out there that these things are not gonna end up at 400 feet high. They're gonna work very easily at 120 feet high. And we may very well be a lot better off if we just sit tight for a little while and let technology do what it is supposed to do, instead of rushing to put this thing up. But this isn't the place that we should have this meeting. They should be putting these, these concerns on the agenda so that you and I consider their meeting and talk these out. That's not happened.
I don't disagree with you, but it's not my, it's not my job to tell any other committee or board what to do on their agenda. I, and I understand your point.
Well, that was the other question that I wanted to ask tonight, and I apologize for getting into it a little bit. But what is the process that we, that, that, that this thing is happening? What is the, are you expecting a vote from the wind turbine committee recommending something? And then you would take a vote and go to town meeting? It?
The, the board will eventually have to take a vote on this. Will have to determine whether it would be, go to town meeting, if it would go to town meeting with an override option, with a, you know, levy limit option. But certainly, you know, I can't speak for the rest of the board, but we, you know, a, a project of this magnitude should go to town meeting.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And I just wanna point out that we had a petition here in, before the board a couple months ago, and we had assured those residents as well in the Oxford Street South area that they would have an opportunity to be heard and address their concerns. So I'm, I'm going to ask Ms. Plutuchus up in a minute, but first I wanna hear from Mr. Bernie.
I think that there's a, there's a couple of issues. There, I think, well, Mr., first of all, the wind turbine committee has held public meetings consistently throughout the process. Maybe not on a regular schedule, the same as this board. They're posted as any other meeting. They are a public meeting. They do allow public comment. To Mr. Ringardt's point, the chair and I did have a conversation before the new year about working to schedule a meeting, and, and how he could include Mr. Ringardt's concerns. What we're working to do is resolve the business plan issue so that at that meeting, our consultant can be in the area to discuss the approved items of the business plan, the strategy to move forward with them, and be available to respond to some of Mr. Ringardt's questions. So I apologize if, if it hasn't gotten to Mr. Ringardt that we're working on that, but there has been some holdup here. I had hoped that this would be resolved prior to being able to schedule a meeting. As to a lot of the questions Mr. Ringardt raises about technology, about whether or not we should be building there, whether or not we should be doing this project at all, and the public outreach, the public outreach is part of preparing for grants to install. A lot of the information that we're trying to gather would be the subject of that public outreach. The feasibility we, study we have now is very preliminary, as most feasibility studies are. Some of the studies that we're looking to do, again, as I mentioned earlier, would dial in on very specific items that the community, and specifically at Butters, would be interested and concerned about. So, and I, I don't wanna speak for the chair of the committee, but from, from my perspective, we do ourselves a disservice to hold a public outreach meeting without a complete set of information that we're working to get. And having that information would hopefully either enlighten or further solidify somebody's opposition or, or support. And without that information, I think that we do a lot of, a, a lot of work to create additional questions that potentially could be answered with the completion of these studies. Again, this, this board can't make any recommenda, can't, you can do whatever you want. You most likely wouldn't be making recommendations on how to fund it or whether to go forward without some advice from administration and the wind turbine alternative energy committee. And I think that it would be a disservice to them and the community to make that recommendation without completing the study that we have, and hopefully the acoustic study, because I think that will either prove that the turbine will have minimal to no impact, or it, it may come back that the acoustics don't work, and it is gonna be problematic. But without that information, neither is, we, we can't prove either, either scenario.
Mr. Plutuchus, and then Mr. O'Connell.
Thank you, Mr. Bernie. I've learned a lot of details. Bob Plutuchus, 231 Milbury Street. And I'll just be speaking for myself. I'll address the first issue that we don't allow Mr. Ringardt to speak. Watch the tapes. I've been accused of possibly letting him run one of the meetings. I am completely open and willing to let anyone speak at a certain point, and when it's proper, and after the committee speaks. And he's had adequate time to speak. I was criticized by one citizen as giving too much. And I know that public comment here is three minutes. Watch the tapes. That's where the truth is. Regarding Mr. Ringardt's accusation, that I do not put anything on air from his requests, I would refer to you to the meeting on June 20th, 2013. Approximately 50% of that meeting were his concerns, and they're listed right here. As far as the letter that he sent, I read the letter in December, and it had some good points. Mr. Ringardt is a very intelligent man. He's, he knows the town government very well, better than I do. He's had a lot of experience in town government. There were some things that I wanted to know the answer to. One of them was the ownership of the land. It would not have surprised me if we had been working on land that wasn't owned exclusively by the town, and might have been by the school committee. I've seen projects in town, several, where we didn't own the land and projects were talked about or started. I've seen design done on projects where we didn't own the land, and weren't many reservations. But I'm not gonna go into that. That's a story that's already been told in front of the select board when I was chairman of the Veterans Memorial Carer Committee, which was an eye-opening experience for me. We had flickered discussions at this meeting. We had a committee talk about SCD. There was a balloon test discussion. There was a time of meeting discussions. Mr. Ringardt wanted us to change the date and times of meetings. And, which I explained to him that it's when you have a number of people, it's hard to find a time of volunteers who can come all at the same time. And he also insisted that meetings be televised. I personally had no problems with that. And that was discussed at this meeting, too. So as far as not, is the proof refuting what was just said about my committee. As far as what's new about the wind turbine now, the testing, the wind testing has now gone on for another year. That may give us even more verification of how sound that the testing scientific data is. It'll tell us if it was the same as last year or different. If it's pretty close to the same, and SCD can prove that, we'll have more scientific data than most wind studies that have been put up. There's also a new player in the New England area. It's a big, it's a big company, and it's located in Worcester. It's called Siemens. And if this study, feasibility study goes through, we don't have to put a GEMESA 850 up there, which is what SCD likes. Certainly, since Siemens is on board now, why? They were just given the Cape Wind project. They will have a footprint in Massachusetts on wind turbines. I'm sure they'll have an alternative to it. And the town certainly wouldn't just go with a study's recommendation on going with one company. We could certainly study all the different companies and see what they have to offer, especially now that Siemens has gone, has a multi-billion dollar contract with Cape Wind. On the positive side, we can see the effects of wind turbines. I hope all of you read Sunday's paper. Zero energy use in a home. One of the parts of it is the wind turbine. Just as his house can be, use zero energy, no tie to national grid, this town could be that way, too, if we get green enough. We could do that. All we'd have to do is follow this construction company's footprint. We've just begun touching on how to save money. We, we haven't finished the job. It's only the beginning. We haven't even talked about electric cars, electric motorcycles, all different ways to save, to save money. There are many. I'll stay here for any questions.
I do have a question. Do you have an expectation, or do you know when your next meeting will be scheduled?
The people on the, I determined that from Mr. Ringardt's questions, that at least two people would need to be there. And I'll preface it with this. We're being talked-
My question is just, when you're, when you would be meeting regularly? Because, I mean, we, we also had 37 people who signed a petition who want, you know, want to attend a meeting. So I guess my question is more generic, how, you know, your regular scheduled meetings?
Through the chair? If you'd just give me a, a few sentences, I think you'll see what I'm, what I'm hitting at. We had a meeting, and none of them came. And that was a posted meeting. And they, I mean, it was posted on TV. It was posted. So they have had another opportunity to come and express themselves. No one showed, no one was there. Maybe we need another way of notify them, as I suggested at the other meeting. But as far as the meeting goes, if you'll just deal with me for a second, I felt that we needed the town and SCD to explain some of the questions. I'm not an engineer, and we need that engineering background. Plus, their reputation is on the line. You know, there, there's some things in that letter that need to be answered by them, and by the town, not by the advisory committee, which is my last point. And as an advisory committee, we are not like the planning board. We are not like the conservation committee. We are not like the select board. You have someone giving you an agenda every week. I have an agenda if it comes from Mr. Bernie. As the town makes decisions, the town makes all the decisions. We only give advice. You want me to have monthly meetings, but if I have no agenda, how can I have a meeting? I will have a meeting anytime there is agenda items. The last time we tried to get SCD here, he didn't have enough notification. A month wasn't quite enough for him to come to the meeting. We need him there. So the next meeting, I'm hoping it's at the end of January, or beginning of February, before the 11th, which is when one, one member's going on vacation. You know, we wanna try to get a forum, too. But I think you have to keep in mind, as an advisory committee, we do not have people generating agendas for us. Well, you could say, "I'm gonna have it on the first of each month." As agenda items come in, we have meetings. No agenda items, I'm not gonna call a meeting if, and waste the people's time. Thank you for giving that leeway. Any questions?
No, I just wanted to be clear. I wasn't asking you to schedule monthly meetings. I was just asking if you had a regular schedule, whether it was to meet quarterly for updates. I wasn't, it's not my position to tell you to meet monthly. I just didn't know if you, going into this, you know, with a charge, if you had set, set a meeting schedule, be it quarterly meetings, or now you're telling me they're as needed. So-
That is correct.
I think that will be helpful for, for residents. And I'll also, I, I agree with you. We, we have to do more than just put it on public access. We assume that everyone has cable and sees this. But, and, and it may be our responsibility to notify the residents who signed that petition, but I, I would believe they probably didn't have adequate notice, and that's why they weren't there. So certainly we'll make a better effort to make sure that those residents who presented a petition to this board are notified of a, a future meeting.
And that's great with me. I want them to be invited.
Mr. Simoneon, and then you'll be next. Mr. Page.
I just, I just have one comment. From the last few times that we've had this discussion, the folks that were here that signed the petition, they, they had concerns and were- signed the petition, they had concerns and were surprised to find out that there was information out there. They, they weren't aware of information that I believe Mr. Bernie said was posted on the website and accessible in other places. I know that I know some of the steps that need to take place to move us along. Obviously, Mr. Ringard is aware of some of the steps, but I don't think that any of us know what all of the things are that need to happen going forward. So in order to hopefully shed some light on that path and maybe clean up some of this confusion, I'll go back to my, an earlier comment I made, that I would ask a, something to the, akin to a project plan, at least we submit, with some of the things that need to take place. For instance, tonight, Mr. Bernie spoke about the project plan, and the fact that it hasn't, despite the fact that he's followed up, he hasn't, I, I didn't, I didn't realize that we were waiting on something like that. So if, I, I think a lot of the confusion might be cleared up if we could, if, if we all had something to that effect, to at least know. I, I realize that you can call the state office as many times as you want, and they're probably still going to move it there at the pace that they want to move at. Hopefully, they will realize, you know, what it means to us to continue to have them not get back to us. But if we could at least do that, so that we're all aware of what the steps are going down the road, there may be some less confusion as far as what, what is going to take place or needs to take place as, as we move forward.
Listen, that is not determined by the committee. It's determined by Mr. Bernie and town government.
I understand. I'm just making that general comment, not necessarily directed at you. Just, I, I think if we all had that, it might be less confusing.
We give advice and-
Understood.
I'm going to hear from Mr. Page, then Mr. O'Connor, and then Mr. Grossman.
It kind of seems like we're in a little bit of a mess here. What we need to do is get, maybe we do need to get our state representatives involved, because it seems like we're just going around in circles and circles between the town boards and the state boards and the people that work for the town board. And the other thing, the only thing I want to clarify, because I know it was a mis injustice, was that Mr. Ringard had came up here and said, there's, there's nothing on the agendas. Well, I went to the last meeting they had, and it was on the agenda, and I seen it, and I went there, and Mr. Ringard had talked about his report and had talked about quite a few of the questions on the report, and he had responses to it. To come up here and say there was no responses to his report, he's totally incorrect. Thank you.
First of all, I want to applaud all the people that come out and select, go on these boards and give up their time. It's hard to get people because of time-wise, but I watch a lot of meetings on TV, and Mr. Bernie, I can tell you, you're very thorough, right to, on every, any board he goes to, the information is there as of tonight. I know a little what's going on, you hear. I listen to Mr. Sapukas, and he comes up with the information what we need. And then we see tonight where we have the arguing and going back and forth. When we have these boards or something that's going on now, would it be proper from a select member to go on this board to oversee along with Mr. Bernie? He does control a lot in the town, but, you know, I don't have the time, and I appreciate what you're doing. So I'm not saying you should do this and that. But would it be feasible for a board member to get on a board like this, to oversee it, or help Mr. Bernie get along with information or contact your state reps? We know how the state is, grant so on and so forth, but, yeah, I don't know how to-
Well, certainly-
Just a suggestion. That's, I mean, if folks do enough for the town, people give up their time for boards, I thank them for it. But like I say, what I've seen Mr. Bernie do since he's been here, very thorough, and I can, I know the research he does along with Mr. Sapukas. I've seen him and other members like Wayne and Kim Holstrom and other people that just donate their time. I just figured maybe having a little more backbone, someone from the board, then at least the board knows what's going on.
Certainly, it's not, you know, a member of the board couldn't go to one of their meetings and oversee it. That wouldn't be appropriate. There have been selectmen representatives and liaisons, not voting members, to bring back information to their board. For example, the, the school buildings committee to bring information back. But that's more so if this board would be taking action. I mean, all members, I mean, Mr. Simoneans attended meetings. I think probably everyone has attended at least one. Maybe we just need to be a little more proactive.
No, no, I'm not saying that. I'm not, I don't know how the charter works or how the selectmen can get involved. It's just sitting back there listening. Like I said, he, he's doing a great job. He has his paperwork. If he makes the call and people aren't calling back, there's not much you can do.
Yeah. Thank you.
But it was just a suggestion, that's all.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Grossman?
Yes, Mr. Bernie. The company that is supplying all the information, just part of the, whether it's a contract or a study, is SCD?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Have we considered, we have all our eggs in one basket. Have we considered an outside firm to evaluate SCD's valuation for the project?
The question has been raised. The, I believe, excuse me, I believe that the wind turbine advisory committee has discussed this. They have not made a recommendation to or not to, to the administration. The issue would be where the funding for that outside study would come. And again, I think that's something that would be done at the end, the completion of all the studies, because you want them to evaluate the totality of the information. Because similar to the planning board, when someone does a peer review, they're looking at the full submission to identify whether or not what submitted meets industry standards, has reasonable conclusions, that kind of thing. We're still in the, in the middle of, of the study. We have, we finalized the feasibility study. We're still in the middle of the business planning portion, which is ultimately part of, of the whole study. If we are granted the acoustic grant, that's an additional set of information that if we're going to have a peer review, in my opinion, should be included as part of, of whatever is peer reviewed. So I think that the option hasn't been totally thrown out. But again, I, I think that if the acoustic or Flicker study come back and say, this just isn't going to work, then we save ourselves from going through the process of finding and hiring someone to do the peer review. If it comes back that says everything's, you know, coming up sunshine and puppies, and we have a peer review, they may find some inconsistencies, or they may say, nope, the forecast really is sunshine and puppies. And to Mr. Simone's point, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, while, while I'm here, I'm happy to drop the project plan. I can get it to the town manager for distribution to the board. I can post it on the website. It will be sort of just a flow chart of where we're at and, and where we're going before we get somewhere. I apologize if that's something that, that hadn't been clear before. I can easily rectify that and have it out in the next week or two.
I'm going to just try to wrap this up. Mr. Ringard had had his hand up. And then hopefully, we can, we can move forward here. We can maybe, you can work with Mr. Plutukas on getting, you know, an informational meeting scheduled. Mr. Plutukas, I hope 100 people show up, and if no one shows up, please let us know. At least they would have had the opportunity. We'll make sure that we get the information out there. Mr. Ringard?
I won't take a lot of your time. I want to explain this issue of what was on the agenda, what wasn't on the agenda. Early in April, before the feasibility study came out, I went to the committee and I asked them, as I did this board, to put these meetings on TV. I asked them to hold them at night so that people could come, and I asked them to float a balloon and a couple of other things. Those items did get on the June meeting. The first packet that I sent in June had another 11 items. We couldn't speak about that, and I think any committee member that was there will tell you that we were not allowed to speak about that because Mr. Plutukas had not got them in time to put them on the agenda. After the feasibility study came out, there were three, three more packets directly to him and a packet to the finance committee of 31 separate items that have not been put on the agenda. Mr. Page would have no idea what I'm talking about because he hasn't seen those. There are 31 separate items that I would like to discuss, and I'd be perfectly happy to read all these if you want to. It's not the place for it. There's a lot of items that we haven't talked about yet. He did talk about the three or four, the balloon. They did talk about that in June. The balloon isn't on any of these items here. So there is a whole lot of things that have not been put on the agenda yet.
Thank you. And we'll work with Mr. Bernie to try, to try to work with Mr. Plutukas on getting agenda put together, even if it's strictly an informational meeting. Members of the Select Board can attend, anyone who has questions. And hopefully, we can move forward in that forum to get these answers, questions answered, which is the forum it should be.
And I believe that Sharon has the original petition?
Yeah, and it would be part of a pack-
And that has addresses on it?
Yes.
I can get that, and when a meeting is set, we can send-
Excellent.
An invitation, a, a notice to, to those homeowners. And again, anybody at home, anybody on the Select Board, if you have questions about this project or, or anything else, please don't hesitate to contact me. I'm happy to come here and discuss it publicly, but I'm also happy to provide you information, especially if you have residents calling you. And that way, they don't have to try and wait and, and see it tonight. And whatever I give you offline, I'm happy to come and present here as well. So my, my door's open, my email constantly goes, so, so please don't hesitate. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Simone?
I just, I just want to clarify one thing. Mr. O'Connor said, and maybe, maybe it's just the way that you speak, but you used the word argue. So I just want to be clear. It's not, my intent in putting this on the agenda was not to facilitate an argument between any of the boards and committees and groups here in town. It was to have this discussion and, and come to a solution. And I, I do want to say that there are a couple of times, the report from SCD, and I do not remember what the other item was, but both times I asked Mr. Bernie to send me, and they were long documents that took me quite a bit of time to review, but he, both times immediately sent me the documents that were pertinent to, and I know one was, one was the study that SCD had done. So I appreciate the discussion that we had here, because ultimately, I want to move this forward to its ultimate end, whatever that may be. And for informational purposes, it never hurts. Every time we've had this discussion, I've learned something new. So, you know, having a flow chart, understanding where we need to go or what needs to happen, and just, I believe will help all, a lot of the people concerned. So I, I, my comments were not in any way, shape, or form, that was not, not a knock on you, Mr. O- I was just saying, you used the word argue, and, and maybe that's just the terminology you speak with. I just wanted you to know that I wasn't trying to argue with anyone. I was trying to facilitate this discussion and debate so that we can move forward. And that was it.
We really need to move on. Mr. Hamel, very briefly?
Can we just set a date certain that we have a meeting?
That's not up to this board. It's up to the chairman to, to call his meeting.
Can we, but if we get everybody together? I mean, we're getting old discussing this.
I agree, and I think that, you know, we've had the conversation tonight, hopefully, you know, with Mr. Bernie and Mr. Plutukas, they can work towards getting this meeting scheduled and send out the proper notifications. But it's certainly, you know, not up to this board to tell a chairman of another board when to schedule a meeting. So we really need to move on with the agenda. Mr. O'Connor, very briefly, we have, we have several more items on the agenda, and this really belongs at the Wind Turbine and Alternative Energy Committee.
If I said argument, I, I apologize.
It's no, no big deal.
You know, I come up and I see this going on. Nobody's pointing fingers at you or whatever, but I, you know, I can tell you one thing when you bring that up. It just brings another thing up. I was going to come up here December 23rd. I watched the December 9th meeting. It just goes back and forth. When I came up months ago, when I went around to be a town meeting member, people were tired of this going back and forth. If you look at your December 9th meeting, the back and forth, this is what we don't like, and this is what I see now. So if you want to take it as an insult and an argument, it's not. All I'm saying is I see it. People see it on TV, and this is where it's going, and I apologize to you.
No problem.
Thank you. We're going to move on. The next item we have is an update on the Board of Selectment policy, a report from the Subcommittee. The Subcommittee did meet and review the policies. Again, there were a couple that we want to revisit, one on the legal license policy and a couple of the Board of Selectment policies. Did everyone get, we won't be taking action on these tonight, but by our own, per our own policy, we'll discuss it and propose to take any action at the next meeting. But we've had ongoing discussions regarding the communications with council. We discussed that. We would propose adding a third bullet to the communications with legal counsel, that the, so it's very clear that the chairman of the board shall have access to county labor, labor council for legal matters before the board. When we discussed the proposal for the legal counsel policy, it wasn't, it wasn't to put a stop to communications with legal counsel. It was to hopefully not have individual members going to counsel for the same issue and get a, a response from, from counsel, possibly answering the same question for four, four or five different members. So if the policy isn't clear, that the chairman has to, in his or her position, have access to counsel for legal issues that come up, we would propose that. So I'll open it up for discussion. Mr. Simone?
The reason for the policy is absurd, and there's no need for the policy to exist at all. You have opportunities in, in life to, to learn something and to grow from that learning experience. This is one, and I believe that this board is choosing to ignore the opportunity to admit a mistake. The exact reasons that I argued against the existence of this policy in the first place was that we would come to a time where this policy would prohibit us from conducting business of this board was the crux of my argument. And I was argued against by every other member of this board and said, no, they couldn't foresee a time where that would happen. Well, it came to pass with exactly what I spoke to earlier, the whole process of the town manager reappointment and the contract and all of that that I discussed earlier. The policy doesn't need to be in place, and there is also no reason for the chair of this board to be treated any differently than any other member of this board. Now you're going to tweak a policy that failed and try to put another patch on it and say, well, only the chair can contact town council whenever they want. That's absurd. It doesn't make any sense once again. Any member of this board should be able to contact town council. Every single one of us was elected by you to do the same job up here. The position of chair is to facilitate the meeting. It does not give any special powers or privileges or make that vote any more or less important than any other member of this board. The policy is ridiculous. There's no need for it. And if this board had any sense, they would just vote to get rid of it, because we've seen that it failed. To patch something that failed makes no sense.
So I'll, I'll just address a couple of your comments. The, the chair certainly, I can only speak for myself, I can't speak for any future chairs, doesn't go to town council on a whim. It's to address legal matters that come before this board. It's not legal matters that come to me as an individual selectman. It's to address legal matters that come before this board. When we had discussion on adopting this policy, under the discussion, it was pretty clear that it was so that members, it wasn't a criticism of anyone. It was to be sure that members weren't going to council individually and duplicating questions, duplicating services, and possibly addressing legal matters that may not even come before this board. You are absolutely welcome to put an agenda item on, and we can put it on for the next one, to ask this board to rescind this policy. The recommendation of the Subcommittee is to add this item so that, so that it's clear for those who it wasn't clear to. Mr. Holstrom?
Also, one of the things that we discussed at one time before, and I believe right now is it's a filter for this board, because any question-
time before, and I believe right now, is it's a filter for this board because any questions that will go to legal counsel is going to cost us money. And when they get to legal counsel, they may say, that's a policy issue and not a legal issue. And if we can filter it through the chairman or through the town manager before we go to legal counsel, it'll save us costs.
And that was the, that was the intent of the policy. Mr. Grossman?
Yes, if you go back several years, our legal fees were two hundred to three hundred thousand dollars a year. And part of that problem, they weren't all suits. They were people calling legal for information. And it's absolutely not necessary that the chair represents the board being chairman, and if she deems, or he deems it necessary, that's the person to go through.
Mr. Simonean?
Well, I don't seem to recall a large expense to multiple calls to town council when we had the breakdown of, of costs. I believe it was just a year or so ago that the town manager put that together. The majority of it was lawsuits. It was boards suing other boards. Loews was a big part of it. The point is, you know, there's no one member of this board any, any more important than another. Okay? And we all, we all know that there was a specific reason for this policy to exist, and it was because a member of this board contacted town council, and the rest of the board didn't like it, plain and simple. Okay? There is no reason why any member of this board, who is all granted the same rights, responsibilities, being an elected official by the voters in this town, to have different rights as far as what we can do. So all this policy does is give more authority to one person, which is absolutely wrong. This isn't Congress where we get, where you do something, pass one law that is good for you and not good for everybody else, or vice versa. This is a board of selectmen. We were all elected by the people of this town under the same premise, asking for the same amount of representation with the same rights and responsibilities. There's nothing in the state law that says, oh, and by the way, hold on. So this policy is ridiculous. There's no need for it. Absolutely no need for it. No one else on this board that I know of, in the four and a half years that I've been here, has contacted town council for ridiculous reasons, for things that weren't important. And that's basically what we're saying here. Well, we're all adults, but I can't trust you and you and you. I can only trust you. Come on, really? That's, that's what we're doing here? It makes no sense. That's what this policy is about. The rest of it, it's all smoke and mirrors, plain and simple. We did not have large costs due to multiple members of the board calling town council whenever they felt like, hey, how's it going? You know, what are you doing tonight? That was not going on. So those, those points, while they sound great, they're absolutely ridiculous and wholly not true.
Is there anything else on this item? So we'll have, if, if Mr. Simonean would like, we will have two proposals at the next meeting, one by the Subcommittee to have number three added, and then a request by Mr. Simonean to have the policy rescinded. And we'll take a vote on that at the next meeting. The next item is also under Section one hundred, one point seven oh oh, Board of Selectmen Agenda Policy. And under A, it says, "Board of Selectmen shall take action items on the agenda prepared by the town manager's office, and the Subcommittee proposes to add the language 'in conjunction with the chair or in his or her absence the vice chair.'" And, you know, I'll go back to what you just said, Mr. Simonean, that the, that the chair doesn't have any additional rights or responsibilities over any other board member, but actually, it's the chairman of the board who is responsible to make sure that the agenda meets the requirements of the open meeting law, and therefore, the agenda should be prepared in conjunction with the chair.
I didn't argue that point at all. That comment doesn't even make sense. It's not even relevant.
No, you said the chair doesn't have any, any special rights or responsibilities. The chair does.
The chair puts together an agenda and facilitates a meeting. That's, that's the only thing different than the rest of the members of this board. Where, where does that, where does that bring into consulting town council? You're talking about apples and oranges. There's, there's one more thing on this board that the chair does that the rest of the members don't do. I'm speaking to rights and responsibilities as elected officials. Every single person that elected each one of us to this board didn't elect us and say, well, I'm going to elect you, but I only want you to be able to do certain things. They elected us all with the same understanding that we all had the same authority, the same power, the same ability to, to do things here, not to put policies in place that said, this member can do X, Y, and Z, this member can't. That's what we're doing. That's exactly what this policy does. It restricts this, members of this board from fulfilling their responsibilities as they were voted to do and giving that authority to only one person.
Well, we're on, we're on Section one hundred, one point seven, seven zero zero, adding the language 'in conjunction with the chair or in his or her absence the vice chair' in regards to preparing the agenda.
It's fine. You, you brought up my comments, so.
I'm just, but, but we're discussing this. You just said it's, it has nothing to do with this item.
I, I don't even know why.
So this, so this will be on the.
We need a policy for that?
I'm not saying we need a, we, we have a policy, and right now, the policy says, "The Board of Selectmen shall take action on items from an agenda prepared by the town manager's office. To meet the requirements of the open meeting law, the chair must participate." So it's just adding language. We, as directed by this board, the Subcommittee went through every policy, even if it's something as simple as the Board of Selectmen's agenda, or something as detailed as the liquor license We went through it just to make sure everything was consistent.
Do we have a copy of the language that we want to add? Because I don't.
It was given to you at the start of the meeting. Sharon, do you have another copy? I know you had one. I have mine.
Oh, okay.
So it's Section one hundred, one point seven zero zero, Board of Selectmen Agenda Policy. So if there's no additional comment, we'll.
So it will say the chair will participate in conjunction with the chair?
The, the, the policy right now reads, Board of Selectmen Agenda Policy. "The Board of Selectmen shall take action on items from an agenda prepared by the town manager's office." It's the Subcommittee's recommendation to add to that sentence, "in conjunction." We're talking about just the preparation of the agenda, "in conjunction with the chair or, or in his or her absence the vice chair."
All right.
So that will be put on the agenda for a, at the next meeting. Also, under Section one hundred, one point seven zero zero, just to be consistent because our sign-in sheet lists the name and the subject that they are going to discuss under public comment. Under public comment, we are recommended Board of Selectmen item D three, where it says, "All individuals shall sign up fifteen minutes prior to the scheduled start time on a sheet located at the, at the podium and indicate their item." Or we can remove the item from the sheet if that's what the board prefers, but one says that they have to list the item. Mr. Holstrom?
I think that indicate their item gives us an idea of what they're coming to speak on, and I think it's a, it's a good thing for us to do.
So, so when the Subcommittee discusses, we had, we would like to have an idea of what's going to be discussed because sometime you may have someone who comes up with an issue. It could be a personnel issue that it wouldn't be appropriate to discuss at a public meeting, and we could give that person a heads up that, to caution them to be careful with personnel issues, that that's not appropriate for a public meeting. But I think we need to have a sense of what people are going to discuss. Mr. Holstrom?
Yeah, and one other thing under public comment, we have a policy that there's a time limit on discussion by an individual at public comment.
On this policy, it says, "Each individual is restricted to three minutes."
Yeah.
A majority of, vote of the board may extend that period.
Okay, a vote of the board may extend that period. So there is, there's language in there saying that we could extend that if we have to.
Yes.
Would that be before the discussion or after, you know, once the discussion begins? Some individuals, they have a difficult time presenting what they want and maybe a little bit more detailed, and want to be sure that they have that time to be able to speak. So I want to just be sure that we have that in there.
It is.
So that we can extend that if we wanted to. Okay, thank you.
The next item the board is recommending, and this was an, an agenda item that was brought forward by Mr. Holstrom and asked the board to, to develop a policy. We brought it to the board previously, and there was some discussion on it. Members weren't really comfortable, so we kind of reworked the proposal of Mr. Holstrom's, which is under member items, and members will provide a written summary at time of proposal. Any related documents are to be provided to the administrative assistant by Friday morning prior to, to meeting or board, for board packets. But we did remove the language regarding a motion and that the, the member needed to provide a proposed motion, et cetera, et cetera. We just felt that, that was maybe difficult and that we would have an opportunity to take action at a later time, but I think the written summary is important. Mr. Holstrom?
And I think that is, the written summary is important so that we can all, you know, speak on, you know, the subject brought forward to us. But just because we discuss it, we will not be able to vote on it. We'd have, we'd have to table it till the following meeting to vote on it. Is that correct?
Yeah, and it's, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Especially if it's a, a policy or a spending issue. Mr. Simonean?
This is another policy that I just don't understand the need for. This, this is a perfect example of government just sticking their fingers into everything. If someone puts an item on the agenda and does their best to explain it, and it comes here, we all have the ability to say, oh, okay, this is a little more detailed than what I thought. Let's table it till the next meeting, and I have time to better prepare. So now, and, and I really, I really, at this point, don't care what, what people think, but let me just, let me just go down this road. In addition to my nine-hour workdays and two and a half additional hours of commute and being responsible for getting three kids to afternoon events, and, which basically takes up my entire day, and finding time to research items that come before this board so that I can intelligently vote on things, prepare for all the agenda, now I have to also find more time to write a written summary. And, and I'll give you a perfect case in point of why it's not necessary. I put an agenda item on the agenda to discuss Board of Selectmen policies. Mr., that, that's pretty general. Mr. Holstrom came to that meeting, to that meeting prepared with his book of Board of Selectmen policies. Said, well, and, and I asked, I said, I had, whatever the reason was, I wasn't going to speak to it that night. And his comment was, but I'm prepared to speak to it tonight. I have my Board of Selectmen book. He was, he was prepared to speak to it because he had his book there, and all I put on the agenda was Board of Selectmen, discussion on Board of Selectmen policies. Why this policy is necessary is absolutely beyond me.
Well, I, I can answer that, and it's not just about the fellow board members. And I will use your, your previous item, Wind Turbine, update. We really weren't sure, so Sharon emailed you, and you said, yes, I expect to have a full update on the project. Please have anyone related to the project attend the meeting. Had we not known that you were expecting people, anyone, anyone related to the project attend the meeting, we would not have known to notify them and have them there. It's, it doesn't have to be a battle, Mr. Simonean. It's trying to work together so that we have answers to, to a question that may arise. We have people here to answer the questions, and we're all on the same page dealing with an issue. It's, it's, it's not a, a game of gotcha. It's just trying to, trying to make sure that we have information so that we don't have to continue going back and forth. We don't have to, you know, hold it till the next meeting and have someone else bring more information, so we can deal with these member items right then and there, have whoever we need be here at the meeting, and address the issue.
Why, 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 why? What, so we're going to rush to, nope, we're going to handle this tonight? If I'm not prepared to speak on something, I have no problem with saying, I'm not ready. I think we should move this, hold this till the next meeting.
So, again, so what, what about your email? "I expect a full update. Please have anyone related to the project here."
Okay, if I, and I, I wrote, "Update on the Wind Turbine project," right? Was my initial agenda item. Why would you not have everyone who is involved in the project there? I mean, I guess maybe I think differently because I've been a project manager for so many years. If some, if, if one of the people on my committee or project were to, were to send me an email and say, hey, I need an update on this section of the project, I would make sure that every single person related to that piece of the project was at the next meeting. So that doesn't, that doesn't make much sense to me. I'm, I'm going to round up the usual suspects, but, you know, again, I go back to last year where an agenda item I had asked to be put on the agenda regarding the vote on, on the tax classification was held off for four consecutive meetings by you because it wasn't detailed enough, and yet, the one meeting I didn't request it to be put on the agenda, it showed up on the agenda with the exact wording that you wanted, along with members of the school committee and other, other people in, because I had spoken about the, the budget. All showed up with prepared letters, ready to go, on a week that I didn't ask for it to be put on the agenda. That's amazing to me.
So.
So really, it is a game of I gotcha.
So per our policy, these items will be on the next agenda for discussion and proposed action. The next one is Section thirteen, which is the liquor license policy. And on our liquor license policy, our current liquor license policy, under Section forty, entertainment, and there was some discussion on a previous applicant, it says, "No form of entertainment, including but not limited to radio, television, record, or live music or dancing, shall be allowed without first obtaining an entertainment license for weekday and/or Sunday use. This includes the use of amplified music inside or outside." So, so I think we would pretty much know that most businesses in town, when you go in to sit in the dining room, there's some kind of low-leveled, you know, dining music playing. I think most of our license holders would be out of compliance with this policy right now, and we, the Subcommittee says, you know what? That's really not, falls in line with the entertainment po, um, policy or entertainment license. So we're recommending removing the words "radio, television, and recorded music." And on, on the same line, we've, we've brought a entertainment license policy to the board previously, which is rather extensive, and this entertainment license really addresses entertainment. Live bands, disc jockeys, music, where you would draw large groups of people, where even the regulations under the fire department are, come into play. So we're asking that the board consider removing radio, television, and recorded music, and that we look to adopt a comprehensive entertainment license and in discussion because we have very few of them, but they impact neighborhoods. We would recommend having a separate indoor entertainment license and a separate outdoor entertainment license. But before the Subcommittee moves forwards with an indoor and outdoor entertainment license, we just wanted to get a sense from the board. Mr. Simonean and Mr. Holstrom?
So by removing those words, they, those wouldn't be part of the license?
Those would not be part of the license, and then they would be in compliance with their.
We're essentially saying that you don't need a license to have the TV, the background music, or, or read. Is that?
Just, just that.
Just those.
Not, not amplified music, not, you know, if you had a disc jockey. Not amplified music, not, you know, if you had a disc jockey, that's recorded music, but that's amplified music.
Does the, how will we change in the policy to reflect that?
Well, it would be the recommendation to remove the words "radio, television, and recorded music," so that...
It would cover everything else except for...
Except those, yeah. So the license now reads, I'll read it again, "No license may, no licensee," I'm sorry, I'm the wrong one, "no form of entertainment, including but not limited to radio, television, record, or live music," and then the rest of it is "dancing," "shall be allowed without first obtaining an entertainment license for weekday or Sunday use. This includes the use of amplified music inside and out. We're only proposing to remove the words "radio, television, record, or live music." And then it would still, the policy would still include amplified music inside and out. And it would just be sure that all of our license holders are in compliance with their liquor license. Mr. Bernie?
I know that we've talked about this a couple of times in specific hearings. The board may wish to consider outside radio, television, recorded music as part of the entertainment license, as opposed to inside and out, due to the potential for volume and conflict with surrounding residences of radio. I mean, piped music might not necessarily be amplified, but may, depending on the location, cause an impact on adjacent residences. So, you know, I know that you're looking at this, and you didn't ask for impact, but or input, I just, I'm afraid that if you completely allow radio, television, recorded music, indoor and out, you may find that it causes...
So do you think if we added the word, "This includes the use of piped or amplified music inside or outside?"
I think...
Because, I mean, our intent is clear.
Historically, inside, it shouldn't be a problem. I think it's when you get outside that you start to, I think that any sort of entertainment, pipe television or other outside, should have some parameters put on it, because it can cause issues with the Board of Health, with noise complaints, and where probably more than half of our venues that would have it outside might not have a conflict. The ones that do, it becomes an undue burden on enforcement on those, because then it becomes a noise complaint. We don't currently have a noise bylaw. I think that if you treat it as an entertainment license outside, you give yourself the opportunity to set parameters on it, as opposed to it's wholly allowed under the liquor license.
Thank you. So we can, we can take this back and work on some language under this entertainment policy, and add a provision that any outdoor sound, any outdoor music caused from radio, television, record, live, will require an outdoor entertainment permit.
Wouldn't that be the next item that the subcommittee proposed, having separate indoor...
Right, but we just, as Mr. Bernie pointed out, we're saying any form of entertainment, and we're looking to eliminate radio and television. And it says, "This includes use of amplified music inside or out." Music outside doesn't necessarily have to be, to meet the term amplified. And they've had discussions on, and forgive me, I don't know the terminology, decibels, sound decibels for outside music.
Do we currently have anything that limits that? And I think, I think I asked you before, I don't know, I think you said we don't really have any way to measure that either, right?
Well, we do have a way to measure it. The DEP has a policy, and I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, it's 10 decibels above ambient, but then you get into the argument of what ambient is, and there's study parameters for creating ambient, but I think if you're issuing a license as opposed to allowing it by right, you're creating the opportunity to have a stronger enforcement. If you issue a license and you put parameters on, as opposed to it being by right and you coming out and having to argue state law, identify what ambient is, that kind of stuff. I think it gives the town a little bit more of a solid position.
Ms. Quail, did you have something?
What Mr. Bernie is explaining is spot-on. So if you're looking at a policy for entertainment, it makes sense that you'd look at something for the outside entertainment. It's not, we're not worried about the indoor restaurants that have the ambient music in the dining rooms, dining rooms, and so forth. It's really, we get into the places that have bands or DJs, anything that at night is gonna draw a crowd. That's really where we get the complaint. So DEP does have the noise policy, as Mr. Bernie referred to. There are sound meters to measure noise and so forth. The town doesn't have one, but we would have access to one. But certainly, if you're looking at the policy, it makes sense to kind of look at the outside entertainment.
So we could include that language, eliminate the indoor television, radio, record, or live music, and then also add a sentence that says, "Any outdoor sound, generated sound requires an outdoor entertainment license." And then we can work on that outdoor entertainment license at the same time, because this is a very comprehensive entertainment license, but it really, and I worked with Lieutenant Moss on this, I really think it more applies to indoor entertainment. And we do have many outdoor entertainment, places who are doing outdoor entertainment who don't have permits right now. The last item is the, and again, this is after it goes to town meeting. It's more or less to make the board aware. The bylaw review committee has, is finishing up their review, and will be bringing their recommendations to town meeting sometime in the next nine months. And sitting in on their meetings, the recommendation will be to change the name of Juice Bar. And in conversation, it was, "We want someone who comes into town, who has a business, to know, to be able to look at our bylaws quickly and know what they need to apply for, for licenses." And it seems in research that there's, Juice Bar isn't a common name. So the recommendation by the bylaw review committee will be to change the name Juice Bar to carry in alcohol slash BYOB license. So we'll be looking at that at a later date. One other final policy, and this just came to me this week from Patsy, we don't even have a, really, any type of carnival license requirements, policies. Patsy said that what they would do is apply to the Board of Selectmen in writing, and take, you know, and make out a license form. They would go to DCG, and, I mean, she said the, they would be required to have a separate license for Sunday, for a Sunday entertainment license, because it's a very old policy. So we'll be looking at, you know, updating some type of carnival permit license through the board. And I think that was it on that item. Did anyone have anything else on that item? So we'll be bringing those recommendations to the next meeting. Did you have anything? No town manager items, no table items. Is there any additional public comment? Okay, it's after 10:00. You waited.
Yes, just Wayne Page and Annie O'Comber wrote, "I've had a couple of people ask me about this, and I was thinking about it too. How would a resident of the town go about changing the charter? Do you know?"
Off the top of my head, no, but I would imagine you would have to petition town meeting, and then it would have to go to the legislature, just like any changes to the charter in the past. The changes have to go to town meeting and then go to the legislature for approval. But we can get an answer for you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Is there any additional public comments? Seeing none, we have the minutes of May 13, 2013. Is there any, are there any corrections or omissions? Hearing none, I just want to say that I thank Mrs. Brotherton for coming in. She really is struggling with some health issues right now, so we all wish her well and a speedy, speedy recovery. Anything else before the board? An entertainer motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any votes?
Thank you. Good night.